First item of business, new councillor business, 2.1 councillor Parslow. Good morning.
Hi. Yeah, one policy that I like it, it's to do with the report structure that staff use in making reports to council. So I just like us, I admitted it when we did our review because, you know, it's one of those things I really quite comfortable with. But in rereading Cuff's book as a result of the policy review, there's a latest to get council's approval of looking at that. And I'll just read a little section from Cuff's book to explain why. Cuff writes under the heading "Monitoring Results." I'll just skip through it a little bit. So there are two bookends to a council year. The first, which in his opinion really should be concluded by early December of the previous year, is the establishment of the budget as part of a comprehensive business planning process. The business planning process should include the establishment of goals, objectives, and priorities, which then leads logically to compiling and approving the budget. The matching bookend is the evaluation of the results, which should occur at year end or as close as there to as possible. If the objectives are outlined with clarity at the outset of the year and described in sufficient detail, then the potential to measure with effectiveness will be enhanced. The actual assessment of projects and activities should be delegated to the CAO, who should be charged with developing a thorough process of evaluation. So this isn't a criticism of our current policy. I just think that we should consider adding a section under a heading "Anticipated Results" or "Expected Results," whatever the initiatives are. And, you know, it sort of aligns with Travis' habit, you know, begin with the end in mind, and that helps shape what we do. So many, not all reports, but some reports we get seem to focus on activities and actions. We should be results oriented. So I would just like council to approve that we, at a future date when Brenda slots in, that we looked at that policy and I would be making a suggestion, we consider adding another heading, "Results."
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Yes, so I'd like so moved that we bring that policy forward at an appropriate time for review.
Okay, thank you. Second to councillor Schuman, discussion?
You know, one of the things probably, hopefully, through the review of the strategic plan through, those components will give us some further kind of structure that flows from there as well, and it might be a good opportunity to include in some of the conversation through that process as well. So it might help guide that process and how we then look at that reporting structure.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Anything further? Councillor Rogers?
The city's a heck of a lot cleaner. The community cleanup and the seniors pickup was, once again, it was a great success. And thank you to all the people that participated and donated to the cause. One standout that was mentioned to me, and I should maybe carry that forward, the Celtic Homes had donated $1,000, which that sponsored five groups. So, and then I believe somebody had mentioned that there was a challenge this year for next year, that maybe some more of the local contractors would get out and help to donate to this cause, which was really good. And, thanks Carl. One other thing, does anybody want to talk on that? I attended a meeting with the DCSS Athletic Association, and there were discussions mainly around fundraising and program costs. So that's, there's another meeting coming up on that, and I'm looking over at Mr. Jevetkov thinking.
DCAA? DCAA?
DCSS, the high school. It's at the high school level for athletics.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And they, so they're under a lot of stress right now because of funding that's happening at the school board level. So we were thinking of other ways we could make for fundraising. Because, you know, the school did send a basketball team to the provincials this year, and that's not cheap to do something like that. Then, being as I was at the Lobster Fest on the weekend, which was actually awesome, and people would come up to me, and a couple of people came up to me, and one was the car washes. The local, and the local shops are no longer able to dump their materials from their sumps at the city, at the city yard there. And I was told that one particular car wash says he hauls at least 20 cubes of material from the sumps out every couple of weeks. And he said with the increased cost taking it to an injection well, is like $700 a cube. So he's looking at, he told me he's looking at least $14,000 extra a month because he cannot dump it at the city facility. So then this goes along with any shop that is in town, I believe, that cannot longer dump its sump material at the city facility. I was just wondering if there would be anything that we can do to help those people. I had made suggestions, well, maybe call Forte John or see who else we might take it. And he said that he talked to some farmers, and they might let him dump it in his field, but I don't think that that's appropriate either. So I just think that they're under a lot of stress right now as to where to take their material from their sumps. One other thing was, I was approached by parents of the kids that use the skateboard park, and they expressed concerns that their kids don't want to go there anymore because of the other smoking pot. And I asked a few other people if this was a common occurrence, and they said, yeah, it was. So I just wondered if there could be a more frequent positive police presence that may be a deterrent down at that skateboard park. I'm not sure if this has been going on for years or, because this was just new to me. I don't think. That's it.
Thank you. Anything further councillor Schuman?
So I had the pleasure of attending the North Central Local Government Association Convention in Prince George. Lots of good business sessions and information sessions. Congratulations to councillor Wilber for her, she is now the second vice president of NCLGA. So we had some good days there and made lots of connections with many, like 40% newly elected in our association. So lots of new faces, lots of new people to talk to, and everybody's really excited about NCLGA convention here in Dawson Creek in 2016. So we were out flogging that, and I think it's going to be really great.
Thank you. Councillor Wilber?
As I think councillor Schuman covered NCLGA, except for the fact that she also was elected as the director-at-large on that board. So we have two members which I think will benefit us moving head for 2016 on that committee. And, yeah, so I look forward to moving forward with that and working for our members.
Thank you. And great job, just to you guys in terms of representing the city, and congratulations on getting elected. And we had probably three or four people come up to me and indicated how pleased they were about our efforts of co-hosting with the other municipalities in the southeast. Thought it was a great idea. And three or four of the major sponsors had already, have talked about not committing sponsorship next year already, so it was really good. So great job, you guys. Any other councillor business? Councillor Jevetkov?
Just to follow up on the skateboard park, it's, because we're working down here for the last few days in the area, you know, when that skateboard park was brought to council to get built, there was a group of parents that were promoting it. Now you look at it, and obviously, there's nobody takes any pride in it. Every morning, it looks like a garbage dump, and I know the city has to go and clean up there on a daily basis. So I wonder if there's a way to try and get a parents group or some, even a youth group, I don't know, whatever. There's a lot of kids in there that are even older. I mean, they could form some sort of a club and try and get some, develop some pride in the location. I mean, it's, you know, I think it's a great activity, you know, for kids. There's a lot of kids using it. But, you know, it has to go to the next step and develop some kind of, some kind of, I guess pride, for lack of a better word, in the facility. So I don't know what the answer is, but I thought I'd throw that out in support. I mean, that would also involve, you know, drug use and vandalism and any, anything else down in there.
Yeah, great point. Thank you. Councillor Wilber?
I'm just further to that as one of the parents who was on that group when we first started, came to council and wanted the skateboard park. Oh!
Now I remember.
I shoveled many driveways, raked many lawns in gravel. Actually, in the summertime, you'll see more police presence there because they're out there on the bikes, and they have that patrol and that kind of stuff. So it's just kind of gearing up to that happening, I think, this summer. But there is a riders group in town that were the original kids that built that park that still ride BMX and stuff, and you'll see them more there in the summer, and so that kind of gets deterred. It seems to be, they try, and it kind of builds up in the spring, but getting into summertime, you'll see more police presence there, and you'll see those older in their late twenties, those riders originally were a part of building that park will be there, and that other stuff kind of seems to disperse. So it happens, it's just the time of year. So, but for the most part, the kids that used that skateboard park are really good kids, and they're very respectful of each other and very responsible. So there are a couple bad apples, but they're everywhere.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything further on new councillor business? Thank you. Item three minutes, we have four sets of minutes, our special meeting of April 9th, budget meeting of April 27th, regular meeting of April 27th, and our special meeting of April 30th. Move councillor Wilber, seconded, councillor Schuman. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Have a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Oh, sorry, all those in favor? Lost up there for a minute. Opposed? Carry, thank you.
Focus, Linda, focus.
Yeah, focus. Item four, so any business arising out of the minutes? Thank you. Councillor, or sorry, correspondence, item 5.1, we have a letter from Jeremy Link later. Councillor Rogers?
He's moving forward, he's really excited. The latest thing is, he's applied to just have, I think it's Seventh Street, just a portion of Seventh Street in front of the, in front of the park, closed for during his event because he's got a lot of vendors that want to be there. So I believe his insurance policy is in place now, and we're just focusing more on the fundraising aspect of it. And last time I talked to him, things are moving forward, and it's, sounds like it's going to be a real good thing.
So the letter, we, I didn't see a specific request, just for information at this point, then?
Yeah, I'm just letting council know that he had lied for that.
Yeah, no, it's great to see him, continue to go ahead.
So councillor Rogers, are you, you're working, are you working closely with Jeremy on this, or?
Not really close, I just.
But you're in contact with him?
I'm in contact with him, yeah.
There was a new, you know, some kind of granting announced while we were in Prince George with regards to like one-time festival or events and.
Is that through NDIT?
No, it's through the province, and I'll send you the information on that because it was, it said something about, so festivals and things that didn't necessarily qualify for certain funding. This new one was sort of like, there's $250,000 available to.
Oh, yeah. I'll buy a lot of extra.
Community groups in, in communities to put on festivals and events. They're trying to promote us as the event, the event destination, BC as the event destination, and so there's this funding available.
Okay.
So all of that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I need a motion, motion councillor Wilber, receive for information. Second to Schuman, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 5.2, we have a letter in regards to supporting the door-to-door postal delivery. Councillor Schuman?
For information, please.
Move for, receive for information. Second councillor Wilber, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 5.3, we have a letter from Connie Brett from the Ron Peter Crew Christian School regarding a request for relief for a water bill. For information? Motion to receive for information, councillor Rogers. Second to councillor Jevetkov, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. 5.4, we have a letter from Christine Ward regarding some questions and concerns that she's raising about the proposed disc course, golf course. Councillor Rogers?
I talked to Mr. Ward, actually, and encouraged him.
Mrs. Ward?
Mr.
Chris Ward.
This is not Christina Ward's, this is Chris Ward's.
Chris Ward.
Different fellow.
Oh, okay, sorry, my mistake.
Yeah. I did talk to him, and I encouraged him to send this letter in because he had some concerns. As you can see, he's, through his letter, what his concerns were. And then I talked to our CAO about hours of operation. As it being in a city park, our hours of operation for the city parks are 24/7. So that means somebody could be out there playing frisbee golf at 2:00 in the morning. And so he did, he did express concerns about, you know, people could be out there, and is there any chance that we could move the tee boxes, like just address the problem that he was having, people looking over his fence, he didn't like that. So maybe we could accommodate them by moving the tee box back. I know he was a little bit disturbed that he didn't get, he got the letter saying that they, that it was going to be a proposal, but he didn't get any letter saying that it was going to be a permanent thing. So he was a little bit upset about that, that he didn't get an opportunity to address it before council made it a permanent thing. So I don't know if, do we, where do we go from here? Do we, do we ask the people that set up the facility to maybe try and accommodate Mr. Ward and the neighbors by moving the tee box back a little bit further? And do we limit the amount of hours that this is allowed to operate?
Do I guess we'll ask through to administration?
I think I'll, administration at least.
Through your worship, we're in the process of negotiating a license to occupy in that park area with the disc golf association. So we'll forward these concerns to that discussion. At some point, that license to occupy is going to have to come back to council for approval anyway. And so you'll need to be tracking to make sure that we either address these issues or we have an explanation for you why we haven't.
Thank you. So we'll ask that this be referred to administration for follow-up as they develop the protocols. Move by councillor Parslow, second to councillor Wilber, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. So we're a little ahead for our delegation, so I'd like to move to item seven, reports, report number 15070 from the chief financial officer regarding our 2014 audited financial statement.
Your worship, that item should be put off until you've heard from your auditor.
Okay. So can we go to the next one, 7.2?
Yes.
No?
Oh, actually, you can't because it's got the financial statements in it as well.
Financial statements in it.
Seven three?
Seven three?
Seven three's good.
Sounds like an auction.
Let's go to.
How about a delegation?
Let's go to seven three. So we'll do seven three. 15077 regarding our bylaw dispute adjudication system. Councillor Schuman?
I'd move report number 15077 from the Director of Development Services regarding our bylaw dispute adjudication system be received, for that staff be directed to forward notification to the Court Services Branch of the Ministry of Attorney General that the city of Dawson Creek intends to establish a bylaw dispute.
Adjudication.
I had it the first time. Adjudication system.
Thank you. Second? Councillor Wilber, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. 7.4, we have report number 15078 from the Director of Development Services regarding the 2015 Capital Works tender. Councillor Wilber?
Shall I make the motion, that report number 15-078 from the Director of Development Services regarding the 2015-11 Capital Roadworks tender be received, further that council award tender number 2015-11 Capital Roadworks to Peterborough Construction Limited for $2,957,292 and 17 cents plus tax.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Rogers, discussion?
More roadwork.
More roadwork? Yeah, good job. Thank you. Ready for question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. 7.5, we have report 15079 from the Director of Development Services regarding a Spring Boulevard cleaning policy adjustment. We had some properties we were adjusting onto the policy. Councillor McFadden?
I would move that report number 15-079 from the Director of Infrastructure regarding Spring Boulevard cleaning policy amendment be received, and further that council add 111015th Street, 1501 111th Avenue, and the bus stop located west of 1004 McKellar Avenue on the north side of the road to the listing included in number one of the Spring Boulevard cleaning policy.
Thank you. Second to councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Report 7.6, we have a report 15074 from the Director of Community Services, Granite South Peace Building Learning Together Society partnering request. Councillor Parslow?
I move the report number 15-073 from the Director of Community Services, Reisert the South Peace Building Learning Together Society for the creation of an outdoor music park be received. Further, the city agreed to receive $12,000 from the Farm Credit Corporation Agri Spirit Fund on behalf of the society, and disperse the funds in accordance with the intermediary agreement recommended by revenue agency.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden, discussion? Councillor Parslow?
I understand from staff that we've done this sort of thing with other groups, so it's just a flow-through and enables a group to move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, great. Councillor Rogers?
I was just wondering about one thing. It's, it's on the Tremblay Elementary Playground, I believe it said in the report. So the music park shouldn't, if it's on school property, shouldn't it go through the school board? I'm just curious.
I think Barry can handle that. I actually think it's on our property, but.
Through your worship, I can answer that. The program through FCC has to go through a municipal body because we have charitable status, and that's basically why they're running it through it, through us, because people make the donation to FCC under a charitable status, and then it just flows through. It doesn't really matter where it's located, it's just the administration of the funds that is in the agreement.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, Barry?
And originally, they looked at putting it next to the seniors playground on Ken, but now decided to go to the school for location.
So it'll be built on school property, not city property?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? You ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. 7.7, we have report number 15080 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the image capturing device policy. Councillor Wilber?
I'll make the recommendation that report number 15-080 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding image capturing device policy be received. Further, that staff be directed to draft an imaging capturing device policy, allowing devices in city facilities for council's review. Further, that the policy require patrons to notify staff before taking pictures on the pool deck.
Thank you. Second to councillor Schuman, discussion? So this is, for me, the aspect of having an opportunity to review this a little bit on behalf of the controversy in terms of how this came to light, and for me, in terms of it's just a really good opportunity and demonstrates that we look at some of these components of our policies that affect our facilities and our residents and users, and really brings back a great opportunity to have some engaging discussion about it. So I really appreciate council and staff taking this forward. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. 7.8, we have a report 15081 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the Kenboric Aquatics Center statutory holiday schedule. Councillor Parslow?
Move the report 15-081 for the Deputy Director of Community Services, be the Kenboric Aquatics Center statutory holiday schedule be received, further that staff be directed to change the current Kenboric Aquatics Center statutory holiday schedule to reflect regular closure on Easter Monday and Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Second to councillor Schuman, discussion? Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, I just referenced the statistics, which really doesn't justify maybe the loss of vacation time to the staff, and really doesn't justify the operation of the place on those days. So it's a good housekeeping thing.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. You know, we're close enough to nine o'clock, I'd like to move back now to six, our delegations. 6.1, we have Dale Rose from Sando Rose Bone Grindal, our chartered accountant and attendant regarding the city of Dawson Creek 2014 financial statements. Good morning. Good morning. Welcome. The chair, the floor, the house is yours.
Yeah, it'd be good if we had a chair there.
Okay, so when you need to stand. We were overwhelmed a bit at their last meeting with chairs, so I think we.
Took them all.
They got little grass put in the way.
I'm not sure if we needed a chair or a pew, right?
Thanks, Barry, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dale.
Thank you, your worship. Good morning. Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here once again this year. It's not snowing this Monday. I'm here to present your audit report on your financial statements. It's addressed to yourself, Mayor Bumstead, and the council of the corporation of city of Dawson Creek. Unfortunately, I'm required to read the whole thing, so bear with me, please. It's, the first paragraph is a report on the financial statements, which states, we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the corporation of the city of Dawson Creek, which comprise the consolidated statement of financial position as of December 31st, 2014, and the consolidated statements of operations and changes in surplus, changes in net debt, and cash flows for the year then ended, and a summary of significant accounting policies and other explanatory information, which of course is your financial statement package. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these consolidated financial statements in accordance with public sector accounting standards, and for such internal control as management determines is necessary to enable the preparation of consolidated financial statements that are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error. Our responsibility as your auditors is to express an opinion on these consolidated financial statements based on our audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with Canadian auditing standards. Those standards require that we comply with ethical requirements and plan to perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the consolidated financial statements are free from material misstatement. Excuse me, an audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the consolidated financial statements. The procedures selected depend on the auditor's judgment, including the assessment of the risks of material misstatement of the consolidated financial statements, whether due to fraud or error. In making those risk assessments, the auditor considers internal control relevant to the entity's preparation and fair presentation of the consolidated financial statements in order to design audit procedures that are appropriate in circumstances, but not for the purpose of expressing opinion on the effectiveness of the entity's internal controls. However, we do provide a management level letter on. However, we do provide a management level letter on our results of our internal control testing. An audit also includes evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of accounting estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall presentation of the consolidated financial statements. We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our following audit opinion, which states, "In our opinion, the consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the Corporation of the City of Dawson Creek as of December 31, 2014, and its results of operations and cash flows, changes in net debt and changes in net debt for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards." So having said all that, a clean audit opinion once again, so congratulations to council on that. Thank you, Shelley, for all your help, Janet and her staff for preparing the audit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
There's some clapping, Shelley.
You know, I think, to me, the financial positions, the financial audit that's performed on an annual basis for our organization or most organizations, sometimes people look at them as a routine bit of business, but they shouldn't be considered that, to me, they're an absolute reflection of the diligence that's put into the financial controls, the financial position of your organization and your city, and we shouldn't take it lightly that when we have the external audit, an external unbiased constructive view of the financial controls and position of your community and your city and your organization are such a critical component to your community, and so, you know, I really appreciate the fact that you guys have undertaken that process on behalf of the Sander Bose Mon and Grindel on our behalf, and certainly we appreciate the results of that, and credit to our, as you've indicated, to our staff within the organization to get us to that position, so thank you for that and congratulations to the staff.
Thank you, your worship.
Yes, your worship, I'd just like to say thanks for your confidence in me, but it takes a whole lot more people than me to pull this together, so thanks to the finance department and also to the audit firm and his staff in getting this done by the required deadlines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Any further questions? Dale, thanks very much, we appreciate your coming in this morning to give us the report.
My pleasure, any excuse to get out of the office.
Come to the office here.
Walk back slowly.
He's going to linger.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Item 62, we have Garrett Lacy and Rich Matheson from Public Works Association of B.C. in attendance regarding the proclamation of National Public Works Week, May 17th to 23rd. Morning guys.
Morning.
Rich?
Morning.
What up? I was going to give him a hug right now.
Maybe kiss him too.
Not a hockey game. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities and services are vital for the health, safety and well-being of the residents of Dawson Creek, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public work professionals, engineers and administrators who are responsible for building, operating and maintaining the public work systems that serve our citizens, and whereas the Public Works Association instituted Public Works Week as a public education campaign to inform communities and their leaders on the importance of our nation's public infrastructure and public work services, and whereas it is in the public interest of citizens and civic leaders to gain knowledge of the public works needs and programs of their respective communities, and whereas Public Works Week also recognizes the contributions of public works professionals. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th to 23rd, 2015, as Public Works Week in Dawson Creek. Thank you, very much. For yours.
I'd just like to thank our whole crew, they work really hard, and I think they do a great job, and we'll be happy to have them on the week provided.
Well, I absolutely echo that, and you know, we go through the winter months and we have experience to witness that, the snow removal, the guys, they worked tirelessly through that six months, and we get accolades, and we haven't getting accolades about the work that the crew do in that regard, and now springtime coming and the street cleaning and the boulevard cleaning and the parks, and all of those things that go on to make sure our community is healthy and safe and clean, and then the core stuff about water and sewer, all those things that you guys do on a daily basis, and certainly behalf of the residents, council and administration, we appreciate that. Thanks. Do you want a goodbye hug or no?
As they run, as they run.
Later, later Linda.
I could have hugged him the other day when I had the sewer.
Oh, yeah.
Item 63, we have Andre Lavoy and Gerda are in attendance this morning from Program Coordinator and Director Volunteer for the South Peace Hospice Palative Care Society are in attendance, and they're going to give us a little bit of a presentation, I understand, and we've got a proclamation as well, so good morning Andre, good morning Gerda, welcome, and thank you for coming this morning. The floor, the table, the hall is yours.
Thank you, your worship. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to speak about South Peace Hospice Palative Care, and as worship mentioned, I've been the program coordinator since May of last year, and so I've just done a whole year. I've got Gerda Coote here, who's our volunteer for me, and also a board member, and has been with us for seven years, and I started with Hospice Palative Care in 2003, and I just want to say that I was a volunteer at that time, and so I have a lot of experience in palliative care, and I also, I just want to share this before I get into these highlights, but there's a couple of highlights I want to get into. I actually worked at Rotary Manor, and I can't say enough good things about the Rotary Clubs here in Dawson Creek who spent over $35,000 to set up two rooms, in the palliative care rooms, and I had the opportunity and the honor to actually work in one of the palliative rooms for three years, so I actually worked in a way that I could see our volunteers working and going and visiting our patients, our residents, I guess they've come back, okay, so anyway, what I want to say here is, we have an open window of opportunity where we could put our volunteers with a family that is in need of someone. There are situations where, because of family dynamics, there are clients that are residents that pass away, but before they pass away, they want to share with someone, and we find out that they want to share with a stranger, they don't want to share with a family certain things, so we give them that opportunity, and I have had that opportunity to do that with someone, and so I just share that with everyone, and I just want to put that out there, and I'm really proud to say that in the last year, we have actually trained nine new volunteers, and this isn't, okay, where's my paper here? And I also have the opportunity right now to thank the council and to thank the community at large, because if you don't usually have a chance to thank the community and the clubs that support us, and just to give you an example, in Bowleathon last year, we received over $2,500 or donations or prizes just to give to that Bowleathon, to that one event, and so I can't say enough about our community that they support the palliative care of our South Peace Hospice. So we formally train and educate our volunteers to provide home or hospital support to our clients, and palliative care aims to relieve symptoms, improve the quality of living and dying for a person and her family living with a threatened illness. We develop and maintain a resource library which is available to anyone looking for information on dying, grieving, bereavement and support, and we offer additional grief and bereavement service to the family following the death of a client who asks. For now, I'm going to mention the highlight, as of April 1st, we actually hired Advantage Relocation, Don Martin, who has given us a gracious discount to be able to provide our beds in this community, so we have electric hospital beds that we can provide, we have five of them, we have five air mattresses, we have five overbed tables, and last year, we supplied 12 clients in Dawson Creek, and they were used for 547 days. So these are the actual figures that we give out when we do our AGMs, which our AGM, by the way, is going to be June 15th this year.
And there's no charge for this?
That's correct, this is a pre-loan bed program, we do not charge for it, and we have, and as I'll mention in a minute here, the raising of funds that we have been able to do in this community is over $16,000 for the Bowleathon, we did the pancake breakfast, beneficiary for the pancake breakfast for the co-op, the neighbors, they supported us with $5,000 donation, the Bowleathon, I think about $5,000, and we just did the St. Patrick's fundraiser, and we received over $6,000 of donations there. So you add that up, it's over 16,000, we also received donations from other groups.
We did the big Ukrainian supper this year.
Yes, that's correct, thanks to Gerda, who put on the Ukrainian supper for us, we had a sellout crowd, and we made over $10,000, and that was just prior to my coming on board, I believe, but yeah. So we are up there, guys, we don't have, we're not here for money, just so you know. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we moved, in July of last year, I moved the office to the John Kendrew Center, okay, which is the great building by the post office there, 929 106th Avenue, and so we have a 15 by 15 office there, and that is where you can find the books, that's where my library is, in my office, okay? I'm going to mention, and I'm trying to mention this, I have to find this, guys, sorry, oh here it is, the training, just so you know, we don't just take somebody off the street and put them into the homes, we have a 16-hour training program for these nine volunteers that we just did, there was two sessions, we did introduction to palliative care and the role of a volunteer, the things that they learned, effective communication skills, family and family dynamics, emotional, psychological issues of support, physical issues of support including pain and symptom, management, grief and bereavement, self-care, and just so you know, criminal record checks were done on everyone, and references are required and are also checked, okay, so I would say that we're doing very well, and I'll just mention really quickly that on May 23rd of this year, we're doing another Bowleathon, and so we invite anyone, it's $50 a person, that includes three games, shoe rental and a steak dinner, and that'll be on the 23rd at the Bowling Alley, and you can get tickets from me, or you can let me know you get interested, maybe you guys want to put a team together, that'd be awesome, okay, and you know what, I'm good, I think.
Can we keep that poster, Andre?
I'm sorry.
For the Bowleathon, can you pass that over here?
Yes, I can, I will leave this.
Well, you know what, maybe we'll get the administration will make a copy of it and we'll hang it out front.
That would be awesome, I did send a letter to the city, but yeah, you betcha.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing we did too last year, just so you know, where we did a grief workshop, we brought in Kevin Hexet from New Hazleton, and we have 26 participants here in Dawson Creek, and 26 participants in, or 24 participants, I believe, in Port St. John, and so we cut the class in half, and it was very reasonable for us to bring Kevin all the way from New Hazleton, and it was an excellent grief workshop, and many of my new volunteers went to that, and my present volunteers, and you know, and the other thing I want to mention, because I didn't say it yet, but our board members are amazing, I mean, for us to create that much money, we've got some board members that are right behind us to get that done, and also our volunteers, so I have six veteran volunteers, and I have nine new volunteers to work with, so I'm really excited about that, as you guys probably can tell, so thank you very much for your time, and we also have some handouts here that we'd like to give out to everyone, and I'll ask Gerda to do that, and then I will give this to Counselor Schuman.
Do you have, is there any questions?
Yes, I have any questions.
Counselor Schuman?
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you for all that you do in our community, we don't, as you know, I have a background in long-term care, and not that we ever want to have to, you know, talk to you for palliative services for a loved one, but thank goodness that you're there and that the society is there for families in our community when they need them, so thank you so much for your enthusiasm.
Thank you, Counselor Schuman. I can mention one other thing, and that is that the bed program that we've done, we're only, there's only three communities in B.C. that have a bed program, in Terrace, Smithers and Dawson Creek, and the other thing I'll mention, because maybe I can, is that it was mentioned about six months ago, only 30% of Canadians have access to palliative care, so we're very fortunate to have access here, and as it was mentioned at a Rotary Club meeting that I went to and presented, someone got up and said, you know what, maybe someday you will need this, and that is true, because we don't know, right? Sorry, Gerda?
I say exactly.
Exactly, right, we don't know, right, and I could speak about my experiences as a volunteer, but I think I've taken your time and that's good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Andre. Any further questions? So, we do have a proclamation, if I can have you come up and I'll read it.
Thank you. Thanks, Alfred, thanks for seeing me. Whereas Hospice Palliative Care Week is focused on raising awareness and recognizing that everyone should have access to quality and of life care, and whereas the Dawson Creek Hospice and Palliative Care Society is comprised of a large number of volunteers that provide direct and indirect hospice palliative care services to those individuals living within Dawson Creek, and whereas member organizations collectively reflect the entire hospice palliative care continuum for patients who are dying, but living within their communities to those who are dying in hospitals, and whereas the Dawson Creek Palliative Care Society seek to ensure that hospice palliative care for patients and their families is integrated and of high quality, and believes that this can be achieved through commitment, awareness and partnerships. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Hospice Palliative Care Month in Dawson
So as been expressed, we just sincerely can't express how much we appreciate the work that you guys are doing on behalf of our community and region, such a valued service, and so from that, we extend our sincere appreciation and proudly hand you the proclamation for it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gerda, thank you, it's good to see you. Item 64, we have Catherine Charbonneau-Hope-Stuckless, Karen Whitford and Charmaine Myers, early childhood educators of B.C., and the South Peace Childcare Resource and Referral in attendance regarding our May Childcare Month and Childcare Week of Action. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. How are you guys, come on. Good morning, good to see you. Good morning, good morning, come on, come on.
Whereas quality childcare is a vital community service that supports a healthy economy, and whereas caregivers, parents, federal, provincial, municipal governments, businesses, community associations and citizens share a commitment to quality childcare that meets the needs of families at a cost they can afford, and whereas childcare providers promote the health and well-being of children and are the key to quality childcare programs, and whereas access to quality, safe, affordable childcare is one of the greatest contributors to the quality of life for children and families in communities across the province, and whereas the government of British Columbia is acting on a commitment to support quality childcare programs and services to meet the needs of families across the province, and whereas many individuals, organizations and municipalities from throughout British Columbia have since 1982 organized events in celebration of Childcare Week and Childcare Month. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Childcare Month, and the week of May 9th to 17th, 2015, as Childcare Week of Action in Dawson Creek.
So, so thank you guys so much for leading this enormous event on behalf of our community, and for me, the babies, the children, that's it, and so anything that we do to help support that is a worthwhile endeavor, so thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention about our celebration this year, we do an annual tea party called our Helping Mill Hands Awards of Excellence, so this is a day where we celebrate the early care and learning professionals in the field, the talent, the work they do for the children and in our community. for the children and in our community. We have wealthy, a wealth of different programs ranging from registered licensed top par, licensed family, licensed group, daycares, preschools, many other early learning programs. We just, all the work they do, we want to celebrate. And so that's one of the, and we ask the community to nominate an early care and learning professional or program in the community. And they send in the nominations and then we choose a successful candidate for each of the categories that we do have. So on that tea party, that's when we do give out those awards. Another thing, this week is Week of Action. So with the federal election coming up, we, all across Canada, childcare advocates are advocating for childcare to be on the agenda. So this week, all across Canada, you'll see different events. In our community, we are organizing a playgroup. So our Wednesday, this Wednesday coming up, at the CCR, our playgroup, we'll be doing lots of fun activities to put childcare on the map. So we invite Nia, we invite your worship, anyone else who would like to attend. There'll be lots of fun activities, a bounce at Castle, lots of fun activities, so.
Nia's not allowed in the bounce.
There's a ban.
High restriction, yeah. And then also another thing we're asking the community was, we're just asking them to kind of say, what does child, what does quality childcare mean to them? And then we're making kind of a banner and putting it around town. And I was wondering if I could give one to each of you, even if you're, yeah, if you guys, what does quality childcare mean to you? Someone, if you don't necessarily have children, maybe what does, you know someone in your life, what does it mean to them?
I'll have to.
And if, if you can't fill it out right now, maybe I could come back and collect it.
I can fill it out in my mind.
But in the meantime, there's also, the, B.C. does have a plan, the $10 Day Childcare Plan. And I'm proud to say that the city of Dawson Creek, oh, awesome, has endorsed that plan. So right now, if people are interested in hearing more about that, they can go 10datchildcareplan.ca and look at that more. But it is a, a great plan that does offer lower rates, more spaces for children, and invite more early childhood kids into the field.
Thank you so much. We'll get these filled out and get them back through to the administration. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it.
6-4, Jamie Maxwell is...
Yes, I, I hear a lot of folks are.
Greasy Chain Bike Club representative and Melanie are in regarding our sustainability, oh, sorry, proclamation of Bike Week.
How'd you guys get here? Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Come on, come on. Whereas cycling, walking, transit, and carpoolsing are recognized as beneficial, active, and shared modes of environmentally responsible means of transportation. And whereas the city of Dawson Creek recognizes the benefits of an active, healthy lifestyle for its citizens. And whereas the city of Dawson Creek recognizes the vital importance of taking action to reduce our harmful impact on the environment. And whereas the city of Dawson Creek encourages all its citizens to take part in the enjoyment and benefits of cycling, walking, transit, and carpoolsing. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim the week of May 25th to May 31st as Cycling to Work and School Week and May 31st to June 6th as Commuter Challenge Week in Dawson Creek.
Hi, my name's Jamie Maxwell and I'm here as a representative from the Greasy Chains. We're a local bike club that mostly does road cycling and mostly we get out of town as fast as we can because we have some beautiful country roads in this region. And a week ago it was winter here and this week it's now summer. And I'd just like to say that, you know, the, the club really does support Bike to Work Week. I, we need to have some discussions about where is it safe to bike, especially if we're going to encourage elementary school and middle school students to bike to school and, and adults to bike to work. But we're, we're all in support of this initiative and are really looking forward to some of the activities that are going to take place, some of the ideas that Melanie has that are up her sleeve. So I'm kind of interested to see it all roll out.
Thank you so much, Jamie. We really appreciate, obviously, the effort and attention that you've put into it over the years, absolutely, and all of you that raise the awareness for our community and making it a healthy community. And so we appreciate that. And you guys coming in this morning and allowing us to do the proclamation. And of course to Melanie.
And we have some more people that are going to speak.
Hey, I'm Calvin from Riders Union, the BMX here in Dawsonville, local bike shop. Pretty excited for the Bike to Work Week. We donated a full bike. And for the winner who wins it, I have a backyard ramp at my house on Briar Ridge there. And we're going to invite them out to, if they want, you can come too, if you want to. Try and ride it or they can just watch us ride, whatever they kind of want to do. But yeah, we're really excited about the Bike to Work and giving back to the community. We do about four or five jams a year for each region. So it's all about giving back to the community. Only give back that you put in, right?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm Kristy from Coventry National Bargain Insurance, just over on 10th Street. And we're in support of Bike to Work Week as well. We're hoping to encourage our staff members to participate in the challenge as well as the commuter challenge. We've also donated a bike to the cause as well. And it'll be on display in our office. And we hope that that will encourage a conversation and, and hopefully have more locals sign up for the challenge as well. So that's, that's what we'll be doing as well.
And I'd just like to note that our main theme is to make sure people are safe. And we do encourage biking by following the rules of the road, wearing helmets, and respect for other individuals on the road. And how do you win? Well, you log on to Bike to Work Week and the CommuterChallenge.ca. And you select the community of Dawson Creek. And you can sign up individuals and groups. We do have 200 t-shirts for the first 200 that sign up with the Bike to Work Week and the Commuter Challenge. All names go into the draw. And this is the items that are donated today for the draw.
Ooh, Lili's in.
Are they going to stand up front or?
This one right around. This one looks like it would fit me. Not this one, this is not going to fit.
I'll take the green one.
Cheryl are going to favor that one.
Yeah, we're going to get.
I don't, I don't see the electric bike.
Oh, that's the one I wanted.
Thank you so much. Thanks, you guys.
Did you know that in Canada, there's something... 6-6, we have some familiar faces in the crowd that we haven't seen for a couple of days. But it's good to have them back in city council chambers. Bill Darnborough, Jen Harcourt, and Brad Nelson are in attendance. And these guys were the organizers for our Craft Hockeyville competition and success within that. And so it's really good to have you guys in city council. And the floor is yours.
Morning. Morning. How are you?
Somebody's getting hugged, no matter. Yeah, see? Dale.
All of a sudden, I don't hate Mondays. We just wanted to present this Dawson Creek Minor Hockey jersey to Dale for all the support and work with our Hockeyville campaign. We also wanted to take the time to thank all our sponsors and also the community for really getting behind this and, and our success with it. We didn't, of course, place top one, but we made top 10 and we really put ourselves on the map and, and showed that the community was behind our, our Hockeyville and behind our arenas. So, but especially Dale, we just wanted to, he was our spokesperson and really helped get our name out there and help everything. So we just wanted to present that to him.
Thank you so much. So obviously this...
Is that blood on it?
The initiative that you guys took, I think are what deserved the recognition. You know, you, you step up and you come and volunteer to help our community. And that's what's the important message to me in terms of how the community gets together and brought our community alive when we were in the competition of the voting. And so I really appreciate the efforts that you guys put in and volunteering your time to be able to help make our community better. So thank you for this. And thank you for the, obviously, the work and the putting Dawson Creek on the national map of Canada. You don't do that lightly. So we really appreciate it. I appreciate that. Thank you. On behalf of council.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's got your name on it.
Well, you can change your name if you would. I'll adopt you.
6-7, do you want, do you want to keep going or do you need a break?
I just have to.
Are you all right? Everybody okay for a few more minutes? Item 6-7, we have Kit Fast from the Dawson Creek Art Gallery and Barb Swale from the South Peace Arts Society in attendance regarding some art gallery updates. Good morning, Kit. Good morning, Barb. Nice to see you guys. Seems like it's been forever, Kit, since we saw you.
How many minutes?
So we have three items, a best of merit council for opportunity to present one. We have three items that we could move to very, very quickly. The only one that we want, our needed decision fund from council is the first one. It's permission for, to put our temporary trailer at the NAR parking lot during the reciting of the art gallery during the summer. Working with Duncan and the contractor, we would choose a suitable place for, for a temporary trailer for our, our office, small display inside and our gift shop. This would maintain our presence at the site during the summer, our busiest season, tourist season, and would keep us in the public eye and partly fill our role as a, as a face on the community for the tourists that come through. We talked to, we mentioned to Duncan and he advised us to come to council for permission to do this. Just, we just needed to have our source, be in a safe area, and keep the parking lot open as much as possible for the tourists to come through. This would allow us to maintain the revenue from the gift shop sales and allow public access to the gifts and to the, to the Alaska Highway display that we have. Our other functions for the exhibitions, we have gotten permission to move to the, to the Calvin Crook Center for the summer. And we would move our summer school art classes for children to the O'Brien Center, which we currently have a lease through the city and the school district. So that would be our request. And I'll leave it up to you if you have any questions on that.
Counselor Pergel?
Sure. There's some unanswered questions for me, Kit, about, let's say, what's the provision of water, sewage, toilets, et cetera, in this temporary office? How are they going to be hooked up?
That would be something we'd have to go and talk to Duncan with. We're hoping that if it's a temporary short shutdown during renovations, that we wouldn't need it. But if it extends past, you know, three weeks, then it's a lost opportunity, lost avenues. So we would have to come up with something. There is power down to the parking lot. Washing facilities might be a challenge. If it's close to the tourism facility there, perhaps we can share. Wouldn't suit for the tourists, but it would suit for staff.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So is it like just an echo trailer or something like that?
We would go to, we would go to the old companies and we have talked to them already. And we do have an opportunity to have them donated. So we're, we're a lot of looking at a cost to the city beyond just hooking up the power.
Thank you. Further questions, Counselor Rogers?
Have you guys looked at the, there's an empty store that's downtown, right across from the Alaska Highway House and Chamber there, right on the corner. Have you guys looked at possibly setting up a temporary gift shop in there?
Several issues with that. We've, we've had a short conversation with Joe Judge for the, the empty bargain store, I believe. And he, he had used the amendment to having, using that facility. What we don't want to do is become competitive downtown for the downtown businesses. And that lacks the, the connection to the tourism. During the tourism, in regular summer, you can have as many as 150, 200, 250 people come through the gallery. And quite often, that is the first face of the, of the city to a tourist. They'll pull into the parking lot, that's where they can park their trailers. They'll go over to the, the Cairn and take photographs. And then they come to the gallery, go through the gift shop, see the exhibition, then carry on to the tourist. So downtown, we could look at that, but it, it, yeah, it's missing a couple. Keep going.
My way of, my way of thinking is the more people we can get downtown, the better. And if you guys were, were down there, people would be down there. And then they, they might go into the other stores. So I, I think in that aspect, I think competition might be good.
Actually, Counselor Rogers, one of the things that we do at the gallery is we, we encourage the walking tours, both historical and art tours of the, of the community. And we would lose the advantage of being able to have that first contact. And then we'd have to hope they came downtown and found us. So we actually do direct, very specifically direct traffic into town from, from the gallery. It's a big piece. And by the way, I just wanted to say that's 250 to 300 people a day.
Yeah.
Not a season. Yeah.
And then last, starting last year, like we've always been, through May to September, we're open seven days a week. And last year, we extended our hours from eight to five. And to just handle that, the tourists that are starting early today. And as far as the downtown tours, we, last three years, we run Narblock. So we have as many as 15 locations through the downtown before. So we heavily promote that. And then in addition, if we are closed down, we would have the, hopefully have the trailer at the NAR park. And then do the course, be firing people down to the Calvin Crook Center for our exhibition.
Right through the mays.
Counselor Wilber?
I just wanted to actually say thank you for coming and having a solution to something that you know is going to happen because we don't often see that. And I do read in here that obviously you've worked with someone and they're going to donate that trailer to you. So you don't have the cost of renting a space downtown or taking on that overhead for those two months. So great solution. And I really look forward to seeing this come up in mayor's business and discussing it. But I just want to say I do appreciate the work you've put in to find a solution because that's not always easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second part of the presentation is just a report to council. I know that the city is undergoing a program review through this year in preparation for the 2016 budget. And I just wanted to present to council, to the new members and old members, a short summary of what we provide to the community and our, and how we manage our budgeting and how we come up with the money to, to run the gallery. And of course, we acknowledge the support of the city and all of that. I, I don't know if the community actually realizes the size and scope of what we do. And we do consider it to be, although we're a nonprofit and we are... do consider it to be, although we're a nonprofit and we are registered charity, we do consider it to be a business, and we do consider it to be important to the community. And there is that portion of what we do, where we have to go out and fundraise, we have to find grants, that type of thing, and I think that's the social benefit that we bring to the community. And also, again, I would have to emphasize the role we have in tourism. The original concept of the NAR Park was, in fact, tourism-driven. A large part of that initial money came through a federal grant that was directed towards tourism, so I think we fulfill that role as well. We just had our main fundraiser on Friday night. Again, it's a success. It's a challenge, I think, with the downturn in the economy, to grow up and raise money through the community, but we do have very good community support and corporate support. Are there any questions? The report, this is just for your information, for your consideration.
Thank you, Ken. Anything... Any questions? Thank you. And third?
The last one was just, there was a contest that was run. Yes, this is a fun one. So the Architecture Foundation of B.C., known as the South, came up with an idea to promote architecture through the province and promote the buildings and the resources that we have. And I think they had over 300 submissions throughout the province. It was the 100 Best Building Contest, and the gallery won two awards. First one was 2014 winner of the Northern Region. They have, I think, five regions. So we had five regions throughout the province, and the initial voting was online, so we had all these buildings, and it was a fabulous exercise just because you saw the buildings grow through the province. And people voted online. We did in the second round, and then the final judging was done by a panel from the foundation. The judges considered, the criteria for considerations were appearance, originality, sentimental value, and historical significance. And in talking with them, the thing that set us apart, I believe, and they took most weight heavily, was the fact that not only preserved, the city not only preserved an icon of their heritage, but they actually chose to put a cultural face to it. So it's just not a building that's, people come in and take a picture and go away. They come inside, you see what the community is all about, and truly, we have the book at the gallery. We have people all around the world that are amazed to find it here. I don't know why you wouldn't have found it. They're amazed by the building, amazed by what's in it, and amazed by the community. So I think we just do a small presentation to the mayor here. Want to come up?
Sure.
I need a photo. Jim Rose, the architect.
He sent us an email for...
I just want to say, if I may, very quickly, I've Googled this many times. There is no other facility like ours in the world. There are people who preserve grain elevators, but as Kit said, they just preserve the grain elevator, and it becomes a bit of a mausoleum. And there is nothing like an art gallery in a building like this. And so it was a little bit of that Hockey Canada sort of approach to popularity vote, and Dawson Creek pulled it off with our votes, and then the actual judges, who are architects, were so impressed with the concept, as Kit said. So it's really, it's a wonderful thing to be proud of, and we are very.
It is an amazing facility. It's an amazing building, and you see the pictures of it, and it really is. It's just awe-inspiring.
I was reading up on that, about the elevator, because I was just reading about it, but there's the historical fact with that was it was in the 1920s to '30s, when Dawson Creek was producing all of this grain, it was recognized for an area, the size of our area, for producing the most amount of grain in the British Commonwealth.
That's true, and the highest quality. In those days, the judging of quality was done in Chicago. That was the grand fair for all of North America and Dawson Creek area, our little Raw Prairie, Rose Prairie, all our little areas like that. We always came in first for years as the best grain produced in North America.
I'd like to think we still are.
We are.
Just ask the port of Prince Rupert, they'll tell you.
And from that, we did get 11,000 hits on our Facebook page. No idea what that means.
11,000 hits is pretty awesome, Ken.
Thank you. I just want to mention a lot of our operations managers also here, who have been the one who probably did the work of fighting those trailers and solving the problem.
Yes. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, and we'll bring the request back through in our mayor's business. And six, eight, our final delegation of the morning is Shirley Grace and Lorraine Lawrence from the Sons of Norway in attendance regarding the request to fly the Norwegian flag at the Peace Park.
Oh, they didn't tell me Arlen Duckin was coming.
I'm just so happy to see you.
Didn't tell me Arlen was coming this morning.
Morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Didn't tell me Arlen. Bring in the enforcer, did you?
Yeah.
Had to bring in the heavyweight.
There we are. Okay, here we are. Whoops, sorry.
Give Arlen.
Good morning.
Arlen, you have the big one on the side there. Oh, that's mine. Okay. There we are.
We see you.
So your annual request to fly the flag at Peace Park is coming up this week?
May 17th to May 25th. And what we want to, well, first we want to say we don't have a red vest to give you.
You got a pretty nice flag there.
Anyway, May 2nd is a really special day for Norway, and May 17th, 1814, was this, when they signed the documents to become an independent country. And so every year on May 17th, around the world, May 17th is celebrated by, they have their national costumes, and they have special marches in the cities and towns and villages. And of course, we like to celebrate too. And so the city have been able to fly our flag in the last, I think, three or four years, so that would be something for that. And this year is another special reason that we want the flag. On May 25th, our international president is coming to Dawson Creek, and he's bringing with him the chief executive officer from Minneapolis, Minnesota. So we are really going to have a big celebration, and so he's been seeing the flag flying, I hope, till May 25th.
Yeah. What kind of celebration are we having?
Well, we raised a lot of money.
Oh.
Are we making a presentation?
I think we are.
Yes, yes. But we won't talk about that.
But what can you talk about?
It's a pretty big deal.
Okay, tell us about the food. Can we come?
Well, anybody, anybody that...
You'll hear more about the Dawson Creek Lodge, Sons of Norway Lodge, in the upcoming weeks.
And anyone here that isn't Norwegian, that I know they would like to be, are welcome to join us.
I would like to. No, I really, really would like to.
Well, that's okay, Cheryl, you can say you are.
Yeah, right?
I sincerely appreciate you coming this morning, and obviously, the request for flying the flag will bring it back under mayor's business and following, peace of our business. We appreciate always you guys as a significant component of our community, and certainly we are happy to hopefully have one. And the Norwegians are becoming more and more famous these days in their curling endeavors as they, the boys, wear those fancy pants. And so maybe next year, we could have Arlen come.
Fancy pants, taken.
We'd love to see that.
Thank you so much, and we'll bring you back under mayor's business. So that concludes our delegations for this morning, and we'll now take a recess. Sorry.
That number 15-070 will be received, further that council receive and approve the 2014 audited financial statements as presented, further that the audit letter and schedule of unadjusted financial statement, missed statements be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor... Oh, sorry, Counselor Rogers?
I just wanted to say that I had noticed, I'd noticed in the report, and I know I keep going on about debt and everything else, and people are getting sick of hearing it. I'm getting sick and tired of saying it. I went from 2013, because these are audited now, at 27 million. 2014, our debt's 32 million. We'll be almost, we'll be almost 40 million. I was looking at the interest rates on some of the debentures. We've got 5.11% on one that has got $7 million outstanding, and then we got a decent one at 2.9% on 3.7 million that's outstanding. And most of the interest rates are around 4.5 to 5%. I did see one that was at 7.34% with an outstanding balance of $56,000. Our debt services in the 2015 budget's going to be like over $4 million. And then I do realize that in some cases, debt is a good thing, ensuring future cost users contribute to the amenities and the infrastructure that is getting built. And we wouldn't be able to have our development cost charges against things like the sewer line, which I understand. I just, regarding some of the debentures, is the corporation, I believe, is able to renegotiate those debentures after 10 years. I just wanted to make sure, like, if we're in a 20-year mortgage or loan, I think after 10 years, you're actually able to renegotiate that to a lower current interest rate. And then with interest rates being so low, is there any way of consolidating some of those, some of those debentures into one that would have a lower rate? And I just, I just looked at, I know we don't have a lot of money, but I looked at the one where we're, where we're at 7.34% interest with a $56,000 remaining balance on it. I just wondered, something like that, would it be more prudent just to pay that off?
So we'll throw that through to our administration, to Jim?
Well, through your worship, as you know, you borrow firstly by consolidating your borrowings through the regional district, and then you borrow from the municipal finance authority. And the municipal finance authority does all of the things that Counselor Rogers is talking about. Your debentures are actually paid off through sinking funds, so the money that you are paying in is invested, and the investments pay off the debt. So the questions that Counselor Rogers are asking, if he wishes, we can get MFA to do you a presentation. I'm sure they'd be happy to, but they are among the leading experts in the world at handling debt and debt servicing, so I don't expect that they're missing opportunities that are available.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, we actually had a presentation at NCLGA. You would have benefited from being there and hearing that.
Yay!
Too bad you weren't there.
Thank you. Further questions? Ready for the question, Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing a bit more about the presentation, maybe at some future council meeting, our colleagues who are there to give us a presentation.
Absolutely. Good deal. Further questions on our audited financial statements? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Posse seven two, we have report number 15073 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our 2014 annual report. Counselor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-073 from the Director of Corporate Administration, read Dawson Creek Annual Report for 2014 be received. Further, the City of Dawson Creek's annual report for 2014 be made available to the public for review and comments. Further, that June 15th, 2015, be declared the annual meeting, at which time council will receive final input from the public before approving the annual report.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. So that concludes our reports, and we did get through delegation, so we're now going to move on to eight, 8.1 bylaws. 8.1, report number 15071 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our 2015 Financial Plan Bylaw 4261. Counselor Schuman?
I move that report number 15-071 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2015 Financial Plan and Tax Rate Bylaws be received. Further, that the Financial Plan Bylaw Number 4261 2015 and Tax Rates Bylaw Number 4262 2015 be given the first of three readings.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion? Counselor Rogers?
I struggled with this all weekend. I'm not grandstanding or anything like that. I just, I'd like to say that I can support the Tax Rate Bylaw 4262 2015, but I'm having trouble supporting the 2015 Financial Plan Bylaw 4261. The Financial Plan Bylaw 4261 sets out city council's five-year plan and provides council with the budget authority to carry out operations and capital upgrades as set out in the plan. I realize the five-year plan, yes, it can be changed, it's just a guide, but the five-year financial plan was developed with the expectation that the 2005 MOU with the provincial government regarding the fair share agreement would continue until 2020. The current uncertainty surrounding the future of fair share leaves this financial plan in question, and I believe if we lose anything, any funding from the, from the fair share agreement up to 2020, that basically our five-year plan would end up being moot. And then I, and my own personal feelings, and I think I've made this well aware, the direction for the 2015 budget was largely determined before the 2014 election. I believe that current council, yes, that's including me, should have taken more steps with this budget to address the fiscal gap. I know of the things that we've been bringing forward and the discussions we've been having regarding the fiscal gap, my personal opinion is, is I don't think that we've done enough to that, and that's indication of what this budget is right now.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
I mean, Counselor Rogers has alluded to it a bit, that our five-year plan can change. It changes as we move forward and things happen and come up, or things become completed. So I think we look at that yearly, and yearly, that five-year's going to roll forward and have changes to it. But, and I hate to put more work on staff, but I'm wondering if perhaps staff could create us a short list with, we don't need all the details, but a list of the things that have been done in recent and maybe even a few more years back on changes that we have made that have dealt with the... we have made that have dealt with the fiscal gap, because we keep hearing we're not doing enough, but we've been doing things all along, such as our water and sewer rates. We just seen a presentation last council meeting from our energy manager on things that we've done that have closed our energy gap, but that's also saved us dollars, and we're seeing payback on that. So I think maybe it'd be beneficial for council to just kinda see a list of what we have done, that we are moving on closing that fiscal gap. It's not an overnight solution, it's not gonna happen in a year, it's a twenty- or thirty-year plan, so I think we've been moving on. So that's just my little bit of input, but I completely support the recommendation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Javecov?
I tend to agree with what Mark has explained, you know, but I think we're just getting started on that fiscal gap. I mean, we were, this council was only elected in November, so although there's lots to do, we've still got time, we've still got three and a half years in our, in our mandate here, and just because of the fact that we have to approve a plan by a certain date for legal purposes, I support the plan as it is, but I agree that, you know, in hindsight, maybe we could've done more, but for the next fiscal year, I think we, you know, this is our chance to, to really dig in and make some changes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Do you want that recorded? Yep. Thank you. And so we, just two thousand and fifteen financial plan bylaw, and now the tax rates bylaw number four-two-six-two, for first three readings. Councilor Parslow?
Yep.
Councilor Schuman, seconded. Ready for the question? Do you wanna read it out? No?
I haven't, no, I don't wanna read it out.
We've passed the financial plan, now we're looking to pass the tax reform.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, ready for the question? Nobody's reading.
Sorry, Dave.
That's all right.
Is it eight, where it's eight point two?
Yeah. Eight point one, the tax rates bylaw.
Okay.
Second part is eight point one.
I'm just seeing if mine'll load faster, just for sake of...
Are we still waiting to read it?
Are you supposed to do the tax rate first, and then the budget? I'll, I'll read it.
No, actually, the reverse.
You want me to read the whole bylaw?
What do you want?
No, I just, so are we good? Are, all we need to vote? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Jim?
So, your worship, you've given three readings now to that, those bylaws. Now you have a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, because the legislation requires you to give fourth and final before May fifteenth, so, just a reminder.
Thank you. Councilor Parslow?
Yeah, Councilor Wilbur made a, I don't, outstatement or suggestion, let's say, use the word suggestion. I mean, if, if it's not an onerous task on staff, I mean, I'd be comfortable with a verbal report, perhaps even, at some, in the last, what? What time period were you thinking about, Councilor Wilbur? Four years or so around this? I'm talking about what things have been done around fiscal gap. What, what window?
I think things have been done since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine forward on...
Okay.
What, so, I'm not asking for an in-depth thing, I'm just thinking it would be beneficial for, for all of us, especially if we're new here, to see what things have been done, and maybe that will give us a greater picture of other things that we could look at to make, to make those changes. If it's not too onerous, I mean...
Yeah, I guess the only, my only comment is that every, every meeting, every opportunity that administration come with Kevin from Berry, from Sean, from Shelley, every bit of operations come with the efficiencies that they're trying to gain with respect to the overall operations. I think back, not that long ago, we had a report from Janet that we were saving seventy-five thousand dollars a year in our liability insurance costs as a result of going out and doing some. So I'm not sure the magnitude of how you could look at it from the perspective of fiscal gap versus overall just financial operations. Jim, then, Councilor Javecov?
So through your worship, they're two different things. Prudent management and efficiency is a different thing than the fiscal gap. And I've reported to you several times that the fiscal gap is a lot bigger in magnitude than can be solved with things like deciding not to hold swimming on Easter Monday. That's a really good thing, and it saves money, and I can put it on the list saying that it is efficient. But I think the important work is going forward for council around a bigger picture than that. And council's directed that once we're through budget, which would be Wednesday, then we'll start meeting on fiscal gap. You've made it your, your priority work, and I think a very useful thing to do in, in the very early stages of that is to talk about those two different streams. The one is the efficiency stream, and the other is the bigger picture on the fiscal gap.
Thank you. Councilor Javecov?
That was gonna be my comment, is we've got a meeting coming up about fiscal gaps.
Let's deal with it then, then.
Thank you. Thank you. Eight point two, we have a report from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding our sewer development cost charge amendment bylaw. Councilor Parslow?
I'd like to move that report number fifteen dash zero six-nine from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration read Development Cost Charges Sanitary Sewer be received. Further, Development Cost Charge Water Works Amendment bylaw number four-two-five-five, two thousand and fifteen, be given first three readings, and the staff be directed to submit the bylaw to the Ministry of Community Sport and Cultural Development for approval following the open house consultation session.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Schuman. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Eight-three, we have report number fifteen oh seven-five from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Council Procedure Amendment bylaw. Councilor Schuman?
I move that report number fifteen zero seven-five from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our Council Procedure Amendment bylaw number four-two-five-six be received. Further, that Council Procedure Amendment bylaw number four-two-five-six, two thousand and fifteen, be giving, given the first of three readings.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Parslow. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Report eight-four, report number fifteen oh seven-six from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding a land sale amendment bylaw four-two-six-three. Councilor McFadden?
I would move that report number fifteen dash oh seven-six from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding Land Sale Amendment bylaw number four-two-six-three be received, and further that the Land Sale Amendment bylaw Sundance Canyon Estates, Loren Drive Limited, number four-two-six-three, two thousand and fifteen, be given first three readings.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Wilbur. Discussion?
I think we're, staff's recommendation is following a very practical approach to a solution, to a problem.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Rogers?
I'm just gonna be honest here, I got a little bit lost on this. Could I get a summary from Mr. Schute on that? Because I didn't, I didn't quite get it.
Sure.
So through your worship, at the time that the proponents purchased those lands from the city, which are the lands that back on the community forest in the Loren area, we had a policy in place, council had a policy in place, that you rebated part of the purchase price in return for reaching various stages of development or, for developing. So that policy, you no longer have on the books because the value of bare land has risen to the point that you don't feel you need it anymore. But at that time, that was the deal. So in this particular case, the proponents asked for not just the rebate that was in the policy, they asked for phasing in of when they would be paid portions of that rebate, and you signed a deal with them, saying yes, as you reach fifty percent or seventy-five percent or... So the original deal had three stages at which a rebate would apply, and it had a plan for how construction would go. And as it happened, when they got on the ground, they chose to develop in the opposite direction. I can't, I don't know whether they, I can't recall at the moment whether the plan said they'd go east to west, and they went west to east, the reverse, but they went in a different direction. So the original plan conditions weren't met, but the development has been met. The development is more than half complete, and so they're asking that you enter a new deal with them that says instead of three stages, there's two, and we've met half the components, we get half of the rebate, and then we'll get the rest when we complete. So when staff looked at this, we didn't believe it would actually matter to you as council whether they went east to west or west to east, that the commitment was to offer rebates at various stages of development, and so we couldn't see any reason not to recommend the change.
Thanks.
These are the last folks under the old deal. No one else gets a rebate going forward.
Yeah, thank you. Does that do it?
Yeah, it was just a deal that they had made, and I just wasn't sure where that came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. So that's our bylaws. Nine is Mayor's Business, so as was previously mentioned, in Councilor's Business, I attended the North Central Local Government Convention and Annual General Meeting in Prince George. First off, it was a real pleasure to me to be able to connect with the new mayor of the City of Prince George, and his old high school graduate partner of mine grew up in the City of Dawson Creek, Lynn Hall, who's now taken over as a result of Sherri Green's retirement, and so it was really very, very positive to be able to spend some time again with an old classmate, and reminiscing about how good it was to see how he's now taken over the reins as the mayor of the City of Prince George. And we even talked about maybe having some interactions, both from that perspective, to build upon the relationships with the cities, and so it was really good to catch up with Lynn and look forward to working with him and his council in the future on behalf of the city. The convention was really well-attended, very well-done, resolutions, a number of them that I thought were very useful. Councilor Wilbur chaired the Resolutions Committee on behalf of the North Central Local Government, did a great job and really represented the city very, very well. A couple of things that come out of it, there was a question for me that I, we had, the lawyer, Don Lidstone, gave a presentation and update, and he really had some great ideas in terms of, for me, in terms of additional opportunities, that revenue streams for a community that sometimes you just don't appreciate, or you don't anticipate, or you don't think about, but the legal opportunities do exist within your community to do that. And, you know, we touched on one today that I, struck me as being a community that's a registered society, that you can have, somebody can make a donation to your community that gets a tax deductible receipt, and I was gonna follow that up, because I think that's a great opportunity for fundraising. If you have people that have a particular passion, whether it be for SPCA, or the Exhibition Association, or parks, or whatever, that we could be able to then leverage that on behalf of a group for a tax deductible receipt. And I didn't realize that until I saw it in the note today that, in our meeting, that that, we, and Shelley mentioned it, that we do have that capacity. So, you know, there's some value in some of these things that you get, and you just don't sometimes appreciate until you attend the sessions and you get these little nuggets. So it was really well-done and very well-handled. We handled a, we had a fifty-fifty the night of the banquet on Thursday night. Lynn and I took on the role of selling fifty-fifty tickets to the people that were in attendance. I think fifteen minutes, we raised sixteen hundred bucks. Half of that money goes back into the...
Went to the Cancer Society.
Cancer Society. And counselor from Prince George won the fifty-fifty, eight hundred dollars for Murray Kraus, and he graciously donated it back to the Cancer Society, and so, just a real nice event. And we, like I said, I mentioned earlier, we got a ton of recognition that we're hosting the conference next year with Pusco, Peachette, One, Tumbler Ridge, and those communities were really appreciative of the fact that we've now come forward and taken on this. I give credit to the Shelley and Cheryl for bringing that idea forward, because it's really gained some huge favor for those smaller communities that couldn't do it on their own. So really well-done, really great couple of days, and very worthwhile. I just wanted to touch on, does anybody have any questions of that? I just wanted to touch on quickly, obviously, our special meeting seems like last week, but I think it was a lot of water going under the bridge on our arenas and rinks, and so just for the benefit of the public who may be watching, that we're moving forward now with the arenas curling rink to begin that process of getting that mechanical repairs underway, and administration, I know, are working away on that, and hopefully we'll have something back shortly and get that updated further. Jim?
Should just mention that, as you know, we're aggressively pushing the timelines because of the implications to the ice seasons for the users. The mandatory site visit for bidders to the request for proposals is tomorrow. So those wishing to bid will be in town tomorrow to view the facilities.
Thursday before, Wednesday before I left for Prince George, I spent, spent two or three hours down at McDonald's, helping them promote and participate in McCappy Days, and another great charity for Ronald McDonald House and those charities that do work for families and our community, and really, really, really good attendance, and lots of participation. The school guys were there, the fire people, the ambulance folks were there, working and helping, and so really appreciated the support of the local McDonald's restaurant staff and folks to make us welcome and get us another great charity in our community. Two thousand and fifteen budget, so we're nearing the end of our budget process today, and we have a conclusion on Wednesday of a special meeting of council, so I really appreciate council and administration working through this over the last number of months to get us to a stage where we can provide that financial future for our residents and business community, and just wanna express my appreciation to council in terms of buckling in and doing the work necessary to get us to a future where we can continue to move forward, and obviously to Shelley and Jim and staff for, and all the department heads for the work that went into building this for us. Last one, or sorry, the next one is the Federal Gas Tax Strategic Priorities Fund, and we made application for the fund of, I think it's two and a half, three and a half million for a truck waste receiving facility, and, you know, we got that today, Councilor Rogers brought it up in Councilor Business in terms of the issues that are faced with hauling this effluent and materials into it. So we've got a three and a half million dollar proposal through the Gas Tax Initiative Fund to try to get that infrastructure done, and we should hear any time on that. And we've had a support from our, indication of support from our regional district to perhaps support us in the engineering component of that, up to that four hundred grand, so we wanna make that formal request through to the Piceville Regional District to begin moving that forward, so I'll look for a motion. Councilor Parslow?
Yep.
Seconded, Councilor Wilbur. Discussion?
It's great.
Councilor McFadden?
When you, you say a truck waste facility, are we talking condensate from fracking or domestic waste from folks that don't have, or both?
Just, just these, we would never take any kind of hazardous waste fluids that wouldn't be, or could damage our infrastructure. This is purely domestic and/or from camps, or from the car wash, places like that, that we can guarantee that we can handle, we can receive, we can monitor, we can ensure it's not gonna damage the infrastructure, but provide that service to the rural areas and those that require it.
Thank you.
Councilor Javecov?
Just on that same topic, there's a couple people have mentioned to me that we don't have a sandy dump facility in Dawson Creek. Well, we do have one at Pioneer Village, or, but there isn't another one that's accessible or obvious, like, you know, they talk about Quinell and Williams Lake, where you've got obvious ones that you can drive in both ways and, and dump RV trailers and stuff. So I just wanted to mention that, because that's, seems to be a concern with the public here.
Part of the, part of the proposal is exactly that, where we would build that into this infrastructure. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, this proposal that's gone to the gas tax fund includes a receiving facility for the domestic sewage from rural residents and camps and that sort of thing. It also includes a component on car wash grit, and it includes a tourist sandy dump. If it is not okay, council has already approved the building of a second sandy dump in the, basically, the east end of town. So we are, part and parcel of that is acquiring some land, and we're in negotiations about that, which council has approved, but there will be, one way or another, there will be a second dumping facility for tourist traffic. traffic.
Right on. And we just thought, put them on, now you've got one in the east, one on the west side of town. So that's part of this, hopefully, proposed. So, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? opposed? Carried. We had a request from the art gallery in regards to a request to park a trailer on their property during the construction process. Councillor Schuman?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the art gallery to have a temporary trailer at the facility during the reciting of the art gallery.
Thank you. Seconded, Councillor Wilbur. Discussion? Councillor Rogers?
I don't think we've looked at everything regarding bringing in a temporary trailer onto the site. Tourism records over 17,000 visitors. I was told there's 250 visitors a day that get referred downtown. We have to keep in mind that this is a construction site, and it's not just a small construction site. I also, I, my main concern is the amount of people that are going to be coming and going that is right next to an active construction site. And the, the area that they're going to be able to utilize, because the contractor that's, that goes in there, and I'm not aware that it's even gone out for tender yet, so I don't even know if in the scope of work, has there been allowances for public to be right next to the site? And is that also going to be cost-effective for the contractor to be fencing off certain areas? I know they'll probably fence most of it, but now they're going to be able to, they're going to have to be on the lookout for, you know, people pulling their trailers in there and everything else, keeping in mind that the contractor's going to have dump trucks coming and going, they're going to have, they're going to have heavy equipment in there, they're going to have their own site trailers in there, they're going to have their own equipment trailers in there, they're going to have their own staff parking in there as well. I just, I just look at how busy it's actually going to be, because they're going to need an area, a lay-down area for all of their materials. So, and then with the dump trucks coming and going, you know, is somebody, like, I can, I can see problems arising with tourists coming in and trucks going out. And to be honest with you, it doesn't matter how many barricades you put up, because we barricaded the heck out of the front of the city here, and we still had people crossing the barricades and stuff like that. So, and I did bring up the empty store that's downtown. I think that that would probably be the best place. It's, I think it was the old video store across from the chamber, not all the way down the old bargain thing. I just, I look at it, and I go, they make $50,000 a season, I guess it is, or 35% of their revenue from that. I understand that they have the, that the trailer is being donated, but there's going to be costs that are, that are going to be incurred, which would be your electrical cost. They're going to have to have probably a ramp for handicap accessibility to the trailer. Regarding water and sewer, I don't, I know that they talked about going down to the, to the, down to the other tourist info place. I just, I just think that before you say, let's just go ahead and let them move the trailer on, I think that there's a lot more work that has to be done regarding the logistics and, and through the scope of work that is going to be, that the contractor's going to have to deal with. Because as a contractor, public safety is, is going to be their main concern. So if you tell the contractor upfront, oh yeah, you're going to be responsible for trailers and 250 people working next to your job site, is that going to affect the cost in the long run? No doubtably, I'm pretty sure it would.
Well, so, and I'll just, I'll just comment, it's not going to be my expectation, we're going to block that parking lot off of tourists. We're not going to stop holiday trailers and RVs coming in there. So there's going to have to be some accommodation. There has to be some accommodation. We can't block that parking lot off to tourists. Anyway, Councillor Wilbur, Councillor Schuman, Councillor Javecca?
I was, I was just going to say, I mean, it's, we're redoing siding here, so I don't foresee dump trucks, and I foresee garbage bins and scaffolding close to the building. You know, and the museum and the visitor center's going to be open, those people are going to go there anyways. And that particular business that Councillor Rogers is talking about, there is actually something going into that building, so I'll leave that at that, that I have, can't give you more information. But they can afford to rent a downtown location, they've come up with a solution. We do have washrooms available at the museum, so I think this is workable. And, and you're right, we are not going to stop people from coming in there and parking to go downtown and do, they don't park their RVs downtown, or their, their fifth wheels, or their vans, they literally park in that parking lot and then walk. So we have to come up with something that works. I think this works. So I'll be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman, then, Councillor Javecca?
And I just want to say that I'm pretty sure that if we put this little request in the hands of our very capable staff to work together with the contractor doing the siding, that this can be accommodated in some part of that whole area over there, that it won't interfere and cause these extra costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm pretty sure our staff can figure this out, working with the art gallery and working with the contractor.
Thank you. Councillor Javecca?
Is there an opportunity, and I imagine our very capable staff have already thought of it, but is there an opportunity to move it later into the summer, so you're not right in the busiest season when you're accommodating 250 visitors a day? Like, reciting that facility, I don't know what it would take, you know, a month or two months, but if you did it sort of in September and October, you're away from that main flow of tourists.
Jim?
So yes, your worship, minimizing the disruption to the tourist season is part of the bones of what someone will have to bid on, exactly as we, when we did the repaving of the parking lot. You want to disrupt that to the minimum extent. It is a very problematic work site. That is why the cost estimates are so high compared to what you would think of just on a square foot basis. It's a really tall building, I don't know if you've noticed or not. We are actually expecting that anyone bidding will be bidding to do it a side at a time, because we don't expect them to have the scaffolding and manpower to be working on all four sides of the building at the same time. One of those sides is on NAR, now CN Rail, right of way, so that's going to be separate permits about that. Because of the size, height of the work, WorkSafe is going to have its own requirements. So it's a problematic work site. And there's going to be a lot for the contractors to work around, but our expectation has been that they will be working around that tourist traffic you're talking about. And if you're supporting, we certainly can't give the art gallery permission to have a trailer there, only council can. But if council gives that permission, we'll find a way of working around that as well.
Councillor Parswell?
The art gallery definitely needs an office and a place to try to market as much of its sales, if you like, as possible. But I was interested, I mean, staff probably has been thinking, well, I know has been thinking about the challenges here. I'd just like to ask a specific question. Is there going to be costs, any additional cost to council as it relates to provision of sewage and water to the trailer?
So through your worship, we wouldn't begin to suggest that you provide water and sewer to that trailer. If it can't be handled through other property amenities, for instance, in the art, or in the museum, or through porta-potties, it doesn't make any sense at all to invest capital expenditures for something that will be gone in two to four weeks anyway.
Okay, so supplementary question, then. Does a, does the art gallery, would it, is it required to have onsite sewage, or would using another location be acceptable for it to operate as a workplace?
I don't know the answer to that question, your worship. That's a building code plus WorkSafe issue.
Well, I'm not trying to put
They would be responsible for ensuring they met those regulations.
I'm not trying to put staff on the spot at all here, I'm just saying, I have some concerns as well, and I know staff will have been thinking about these things, so I thought they, that that will come up as, no doubt. But I don't think this is a, as simple, as staff has said, this is a complex work site. And it's not just siding, and it is also foundation work. But I do know that the, there needs to be some solution for the needs of the art gallery. All I can say is that I know when, in the city of Grand Prairie, when the roof collapsed on the art gallery, that was, they had to find a new location quickly, and they had a downtown store, and it worked out very, very favorably for them. So if we give approval for the concept of this, I'm, I'm not into the betting game, but I bet there's going to be some logistics issues, because the turnaround space required for these big rigs that people drive around, outgoing north and within our community, is fairly considerable as well. And so I think this is a problem that will not be easily solved by just the provision of a trailer.
Councillor Rogers, and Councillor Javecca?
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather get a report from staff on, on, on what, what they would deem as a reasonable plan, before we just all of a sudden we say, okay, let's let those guys move a trailer in. And then we're going to sit there and say, okay, well, now how are we going to deal with it? I'd like to, I'd like to find out what some of the other options are. And with the foundation work that's going to go on, I don't quite know the extent of it, but with the, because we talked about big rigs moving in, but, you know, if there's an excavator that has to come in, those trucks need a lot of room to turn around, and I'm pretty sure they're not going to just be piling up all of the dirt in one corner. I believe some of it is getting excavated from, and removed from the site. I've got, my biggest concern is public safety, working that close to a construction site, because that's what I've done most of my life. And I've watched, I've watched things fall off a building and go three or four blocks. That siding that's on there, yeah, some of it could. And I just, I, you know, tell me a day when the wind actually doesn't blow around here, and if a board falls off that building, it's not going to fall straight down, it's going to end up drifting. And I just worry about the safety aspect of that, and encouraging people to actually go in next to a construction site. And I, I do believe it's going to be fairly busy, I know they're going to be working on one side at a time. So I believe that there could be provisions made for having a trailer in a particular corner of it. But we, we have to talk about, maybe there'll be some days where we're going to have to say, okay, there's going to be restricted access to that site, because the cranes coming in, and you have to have a crane so far from a building to make it work, because there's, I'm pretty sure they're not going to be packing the boards up to the top of the building, they will be craning them up. And that's not just a small feat either.
Thank you. Councillor Javecca?
After listening to all this, I think it's, I agree with, with Mark. You know what, rather than just give carte blanche approval to move a trailer in there at this point, I think we need to have staff give us, look at the options and give us a good idea of how it's workable and what it's going to cost to the city. I mean, you could, if you move a trailer in there, conceivably, it could cost the city an extra, you know, $100,000 for, from the contractor to prepare, to protect that area. And it may be, you know, at that point, there may be some other options that are a lot cheaper. So I would like to, I'll be voting against the motion, but I'd like to see some options that are well-thought-out from staff on how it's workable down there, and, and even the timeframes. And, you know, maybe there's some lower impact or better options there that, instead of moving a trailer in. As far as the toilet facilities, I mean, these rental outfits now have got, you know, trailers that are all self-contained with water and sewer, and you can move them in there, and they're, you know, they're good for public, they're not like porta-potties, but, you know, they're modern, and so I'll be voting against this motion.
Thank you. You know, I guess I'm thinking that the amount of impact that this trailer, and how I'm viewing a camp trailer of 10 by 20, or whatever it's going to be, or 10 by whatever, is going to be put in there. The bigger impact, you're not going to stop, is the tourists that are going to be pulling in there. And so to me, this, if there's an impact to the construction, there's an impact to that, it's going to come from the tourists with their holiday trailers and their motorhomes, it's not going to be from the trailer, the way I got it, of what they're saying they want to do in terms of having a place for their staff to be there while this is going on. And so that's a component that administration are going to have to take into consideration as they tender it, to say, look, we're going to have upwards of 40 RVs into this lot on a daily basis from June through to September, and how does that impact the ability for you guys to do the work? And I guess that's kind of how I'm, how I'm seeing it. That's the bigger impact. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I don't think we need a report from staff. I think that we just say that, let them have a space somewhere over by the museum, away from the building. Like, I don't know what you guys think, that they're asking to put it like right in the, next to the art gallery or something, like, of course, that doesn't make sense, and I'm pretty sure that staff, you know, as they're moving forward with this project, can work a little trailer in somewhere on that big property to house the art gallery. Like, I, I don't think we need a report from staff. I'm pretty sure they'll be doing all sorts of things with this project, and that'll just be one little piece of it. I can't see the little echo trailer is going to cost 100 grand to the city. So this whole thing is, I don't know.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers?
Your worship, the, the trailer is not the issue. The tourists coming in and out, and with their vehicles, and, and trying to protect them, I think is, is bigger, bigger part of it. If the, if the trailer is there, as long as it's in a safe spot, that's fine. It's the logistics of the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of there. And, and there will be an additional cost. It might not be 100 grand or something like that, but what is the cost?
They said nothing.
They said nothing.
Well, then they're going to be paying for the electrician to come in there and a permit and
I guess so.
Well, so, yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Javecca?
A good comparison is with the library. I mean, you know, there's construction going on in the library. Was it left open for people to weave their way through, or was it closed?
Not letting people in.
There has to be some, some consideration of, you know, and I think timing is the biggest thing. Like, if you can put out a tender saying that this work has to be done, say, from August 15th to the end of October, then you're away from that peak season, and, and maybe you can just close the art gallery. I mean, how much revenue are they losing in that period? And close the whole NAR park, so there's, so there's no impediment to the, to the project.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Parswell?
Well, the only, I mean, as staff said, you know, it's, council can give approval, is the body that gives approval for a trailer. And if we give approval, I'm sure, I have absolute confidence, staff will then be tasked with the challenge of making this thing work. But I'm not willing to just give carte blanche to this, because there could be all sorts of extra costs. And I don't think the art gallery has the financial capacity to absorb extra costs at all. So I don't wish to be portraying that I think that we're trying, don't have, staff to, to want to deal with it. I know they'll deal with it. But I'm not, if there is a trailer, is going to be a trailer sufficient for five, at least five or six people to work from? It will also presumably have to have a retail space in it. So we're not talking a small trailer. We don't know the size of the trailer, but I'm just thinking that kit and crew have been thinking this through, it's not going to be a little rinky-dink place, because it has to fulfill their retail needs, their office needs, and so on. So I'm in favor of supporting the concept of a trailer, subject to staff's So I, I'm in favor of supporting the concept of a trailer, subject to staff's review of its feasibility, and I don't want, and staff will deal with that, I'm sure.
So we didn't, we haven't given, nor are we proposing or contemplating as part of the motion, giving them the, a budget to whatever they need to. If administration come back and say, look, there's a trailer going in here that the art gallery requested, but they're requesting now that it's going to cost you ten thousand or two thousand or two hundred bucks, they don't have that authority to spend anything. So I'm not, my understanding is we're not giving them any budget whatsoever, and there's no spend attached to what we're being considering, and if it can't be operationally delivered in terms of health, safety, those components, then administration also don't have that ability to, to give that authority, I don't think. So for me, I'm saying, if the art gallery have explored the options, and saying that a trailer is what, they can make their business work during this construction period, I'm saying, okay, I, I get that, I understand that, and if there's going to be implications either financial, or to the tender, or to the operational execution of the tender to redo it, then administration have to bring that back to us, and there's no spend attached to it, I don't think, so.
So is that how the motion reads?
Well, they, I, I don't know if that's the motion, but certainly administration don't have the go to be able to just spend some dough without getting council's approval on it. We've given them the approval to do the, put the trailer there, but not any spend, because the art gallery said there is no spend. And, and did I, did I, Jim?
My understanding is the art gallery didn't ask you for any money? I mean, I'm puzzled about the business case for it myself, because the trailers that Counselor Jevakoff is talking about aren't provided free, unless you can find someone to donate it, the electrician's time to hook up power won't be free. Big picture, you're doing this work in order to get thirty to thirty-five more years out of the structure, at which time you'll have to do it again, and two to four weeks of disruption of sales. Can't be allowed to hold up that project, in the same way, a month and a half of ICE can't be allowed to hold up the arena projects, you're, you can't make omelets without breaking eggs, and it's possible there won't be a compromise that works. I don't know that yet, because we haven't even chosen a contractor, which means we haven't talked to a contractor about site security, which will be their responsibility. So I don't know if it fits in or not.
And that's my point, I guess there's no, you have no go to spend a bunch of extra money, administration don't, in the event that the art gallery comes and say, okay, we got to do this, this, or this, and this.
Counselor Rogers and Counselor Schuman?
We don't even know what size trailer's going in there, you, you could just say a trailer. There's some pretty darn big trailers out there, and it's, it's, the cost part with them saying that it's not going to cost the corporation any money to set this trailer up, but is it, at the end of the day, going to end up costing the corporation more money because of the, of what the contractor on site is going to have to do in regards of a trailer and a lot more people, like, accessing that site?
Sure, and I think that's what, to me, that's the part of it, that the engagement with the administration are going to bring that back to us and say, look, if they're not putting the trailer in until such time as we start and give the timelines for it, and if administration come back and say, look, this thing, trailer can't work, we can't even accommodate tourists, then that's a component for us in terms of the contract that we're going to allow for the tender. So anyway, that's, Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I, I don't have anything, I, I've lost it, it's gone.
It's all my last time.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, wait, wait.
I think it's obvious that, you know, it's premature for us to just approve the trailer. You know, we need the information, more information about it, and, I mean, at such time, if, if staff come back and say, this is the plan, we think we can do this, the idea is to put a trailer in, and this is the size of it, and this is where it's going, and this is how it's going to be handled, and, then you deal with it, but to do it now is premature.
Thank you.
Okay, I know what I was going to say. So would it help if I reworded my motion to say, allow the trailer contingent upon the fact that it works in the area, that staff can make it work, that everybody can make it work? Like, I mean, put it that way, that's kind of what I said in the beginning, but, you know, like...
Who seconded?
Leave it, leave it with...
Counselor Wilbur, you all right?
Yep.
Leave it with the staff and the art gallery and the contractor to figure it all out, and if it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Thank you. That work?
That worked.
Works for me, yeah.
Enough, you had enough, Counselor McFadden?
Question.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. We had the presentation, the delegation from the sons of Norway who had requested that we give them permission to fly the, fly at the peace park, Counselor...
So moved?
Moved, seconded. Counselor Jevakoff?
And I'm...
All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you.
Schuman has the flag.
I have the flag to give...
Diary, was that it for my?
No, your worship.
Sorry?
So first off, I just have to remark, please go back and read fiscal gap Plan B, the section on the item called bike shedding, because you guys couldn't have got any closer. This trailer is bike shedding. You literally just spent half an hour talking about the placement of a trailer, and zero time talking about Counselor Rogers' concerns about the fiscal gap. This is the wrong order for you guys to do business.
That's what we do.
It's what you do, that's exactly right.
This is the easy stuff.
Also, so, as a reminder, you've had several conversations with the MLA, so have I, regarding the District of Squamish.
Sure, thank you.
District of Squamish has approval and input into wood fiber LNG, which is a proposal for their community. One of the things they have highlighted in their deliberations and in their input to the environmental assessment process, is that they have concerns about the origins of natural gas, in particular around fracking. Mayor Heintzmann there has indicated that they don't know enough about fracking, but they have concerns. And we have an interest, I believe, this is certainly what the mayor has relayed to me, in helping people understand fracking better. It's a huge economic driver up here, and it is actually a very regulated and very scientific process, and something the mayor has been asked to do is talk to you folks about perhaps inviting District of Squamish council up here to do a tour and see these things on the ground.
We've, you know, we've engaged different folks from provincial government, MLAs, ministers, along with jointly with, in support of Emily Bernier and some of the initiatives, as long with industry in terms of informing and educating people, and so I had some discussions with Mike about it, and so I wanted to seek your approval to send a letter of invitation to District of Squamish, the mayor and council, and whoever to, if there was a willingness, if they'd like to, to come up, we could host them, arrange some tours, and help them get an informed opinion of seeing it firsthand for themselves.
So moved?
Moved, seconded. Counselor Schuman?
Discussion? Counselor Schuman?
So I know Patricia Heintzmann personally, and I think that she would absolutely benefit from coming up to the region, and bringing a few of her counselors, or all of them, to do that, I think it would be very helpful for her. In our conversations in the past at UBCM, Jim is right, like, they, they hear that there's big problems associated, but I think it would be helpful for them to get a firsthand look at it.
I agree, I, I think it's just, not trying to, not trying to persuade, or, just inform, just let them see for yourself. Counselor Wilbur?
I was just going to say, everything that I've seen, that anyone that has come up and visited, or has done a tour, or has seen a facility, leaves with a totally different perception of what they thought it was, and so, and I yet to have anyone say, you know, I still hold my opinion, so I think it's very beneficial, in fact, I think, I know several of the delegates from NCLJ are excited to come up here and see exactly that, and see the other things we offer, so I think it would be an eye-opener.
I, I sat with a group from the Nass Valley, the NISHCA, and they've joined the UBCM, are a part of the NCLJ, and they're also excited about coming to the Northeast next year to be able to do exactly that as well, right? Engage people that want to know, want to learn, they're going to be impacted by it, so.
I've, I've actually invited Patricia to come up, you know, like, if you have concerns, like, come on up.
Well, we'll send a letter of invitation. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Thanks, Jim, for reminding me on that.
Counselor Parslow?
Yes, I'm a little remiss here with your indulgence about the art gallery, just, I received an email, which I think has been flipped to council members, but the way it's, I think I'd like to just read what he said.
Yeah, absolutely, because I was thinking of it when it was...
Yeah, Jim's a friend of this community, he lived here for years, and did a lot of good work, and just a great guy. So this is from Jim Rose, "On behalf of my former architectural firm, now KNBR Architects, Planers Incorporated, and myself, I wish to express our collective sincere congratulations to the city and art gallery representatives for this superb achievement." This is the award that was received. "It was and still is an exciting undertaking, involving so many local citizens, and we're very proud and honored to have been a part of the creation of the gallery. We trust that the gallery will continue to have a significant role in the arts community of Dawson Creek. I would appreciate your forwarding this message to your fellow council members on this occasion of the presentation. So I apologize for not stating that when art gallery representatives were here," but, you know, just one further comment, there's a very outstanding, there's a number of outstanding artists live in Grand Prairie, Alberta reputation, and I was struck by a comment made by one of them, his name is Jim Stokes, just a wonderful guy, and he had a show here just recently with two other artists from Grand Prairie, and he said, "It's nice to be in the Dudenheim of the, of the peace country." In other words, they, this is a spectacular, unique art gallery, and everyone says that who, who visits the place, but I really like that label, Dudenheim of the peace, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Nothing further under mayor's business, to, to diary, sorry, Counselor Jevakoff?
Just a question, is there anything public information available about fair share?
Not yet. Diary?
Nothing to do on the diary, your worship.
Our consent calendar, strategic priorities, so we've got our strategic plan for 2015 now underway.
Have you got any further with scheduling our meeting for the fair share?
I was, I think we've...
It's up to you, I think.
There are some items that are scheduled into your closed meeting following this open meeting.
Did I say fair share?
You said fair share.
I'm sorry, Jim, I misspoke, I meant fiscal gap, fiscal gap, sorry.
Zap words.
That's it, that's in your court, I just wanted to add in.
Yeah, we're still working our way through it. Thank you. Question and answer period? Media question, Johnny?
I just wanted to grab Counselor Rogers.
Uh-oh. Thank you. Natalie?
Thank you.
Okay. Recess to closed.
Rogers.
Schuman, Wilbur, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. So we'll take a five-minute recess and go back to closed.
Policy meeting of council is ordered. Page two, we have, we have a discussion, verse two-one, we have the minutes of our policy meeting of council from April thirteenth, for adoption. Counselor Schuman, Counselor Wilbur.
Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Two-two, we have a report from the director of corporate administration regarding our April twenty-seventh policy review. Fifteen oh six-four, so we'll start with...
So your worship, if you could pass a motion to receive our discussion, then you could start with your council code of conduct.
Perfect, thank you.
So moved?
Moved, seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you.
Counselor Jevakoff?
So I've gone through this, and I, I just wonder if this isn't all, all of these items aren't included elsewhere in policy and in the charter, and the stuff that I've highlighted here, honesty, integrity, objective, objectivity, and due diligence, and then, members shall prepare themselves for meetings, conflict of intersections that are in the community charter, members shall not interfere with administrative functions of the city or with professional duties of the city staff. You know, you hear all of this stuff, it's all there already, and comments about city staff performance shall only be made to the CAO, members' requests for information from staff shall be directed to the CAO, members elected to council shall be requested to sign a member statement affirming that they have read and understand this code, I don't know if we do that or not, we're sworn in, and we sign that document. Sixteen specifically is covered off in, in seventeen, and then, in seventeen, you know, it's, can we be de-elected? I mean, we're elected officials, how do you remove us, and to censure us publicly for violations? If, if one of us criticizes, say somebody uses vulgar language in a meeting, then the other, you know, starts a process to embarrass them or something, and you go through all that, I don't know, I, this whole code of conduct thing, to me, is, seems a lot redundant and repetitive from other documents, and, you know, I, I guess, as individuals that are elected to council, we need to use our own, you know, discretion, or our own conscience in, in doing the job, so to me, I don't think we need this document.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So from my recollection, we decided we did, and that's why staff went and, and put this together. So I have no problems with it, I guess it puts all of those things you're talking about in one place, easily found, and, and as far as whether or not we sign this, well, we didn't have one before, so, I mean, I have no problems signing a council code of conduct, and we did ask staff to draft one for us, so it's kind of like, throw it away now, it's, was a big fat waste of their time, so I would move that we just, what's the word for that?
In this case, it would be adopted.
Adopt the council code of conduct, that's the motion.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden? Discussion?
Counselor Jevakoff?
To the motion on the floor, then, I'd like to make an amendment that we exclude section seventeen from the, from the document.
Thank you, that's by way of an amendment, your...
An amendment, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the amendment? Counselor Wilbur? Counselor Parslow? Counselor Schuman?
Hold on, I, the amendment would get rid of the section seventeen, which is compliance I, I'm having a tough time with thinking that that's a good thing to do, and if you have this code of conduct, but you have no means of enforcing it, then why bother?
Counselor Jevakoff?
That's my concern, I mean, this, this document isn't going to provide a means to unseat a counselor or a mayor, so really, it's, you know, I, I think it casts sort of a negative on, on council itself as a whole, you know, and we don't need that, so, you know, I, the points in here, like, I, I don't disagree that, you know... So, you know, the points in here, like, I don't disagree that, you know, to have them all in one place, but to me, like, you know, these long, long dissertations, I mean, I could put a code of conduct together here in point form with bullets and put half a dozen or eight bullets in there, you know, be honest, courteous, and all that, and another bullet like that, rather than have this document. I mean, it's all, costs money, eh? It all costs money. So anyways, as far as the amendment that I've proposed, it just seems to me it doesn't fit in the whole concept of mayor and council.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Rogers?
Well, at the bottom, it says, "City council may impose sanctions on members whose conduct does not comply with this code, including, not limited to, a motion of censure." So there is something in there that said if you're breaking any of the rules, that's what you're going to get. Go ahead.
And so I was just going to say, and that's absolutely part of the role of the board, if a councillor or if a mayor is operating outside of the bounds of how there's components within the role of the councillor or mayor that you can't impose, and one of the things that a board can do is impose censure on them. And so I think about the councillor in Prince George who went through that process of disclosing information, and then it closed. And so that's a procedural thing, then, that council can do to, as a board, can deal with those components when somebody's operating outside the... That's under, this is just outlining it clearly in terms of the roles in which the board can act and what those actions are.
Councillor Javecov?
So what provision did they use in Prince George?
So I, there was a release of some closed information out of a, release of information out of a closed, and so they then began the process of some censure, and then it ended up in litigation. But that's the process. I guess, I just use it as an example.
But was it, did they use the code of conduct?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Jim?
Through Your Worship, this code of conduct comes after that event. It was generated in response to that event and to, this is basically the wordings out of Prince George, modified to what we have in our, as you say, other existing spots. So the wordings about what you can and can't do are out of Prince George because they purported to do things to the councillor that were outside their scope, and the councillor won that battle in the court of public opinion and in the court of law. And the second part about procedural fairness comes out of the capital, sorry, the Caribou Regional District, where the council there imposed sanctions on a councillor without due process, without letting the councillor-director know what the charges against them were, without giving them a chance to respond, all that sort of stuff. So this thing generally has been written in response to bad things that have happened elsewhere. So that's just what it is. I can't think in thirty-six years in Dawson Creek of an occasion of council conduct that would have been captured and required what's in the end. I don't think you're writing it in response to any, you're writing it as a what-if, basically. It's a what-if I haven't seen in thirty-six years. I don't know about the next thirty-six, but that's what it is.
And it's a guide, I think, to me, is the process of the policy that you're going to follow in the event that you needed or had the occasion to have to deal with a particular event, situation, or scenario, and for all of the parties involved to be able to help guide them through that process.
Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, what I noticed under sixteen, that it states that this is to be, in the second line, this code of conduct is intended to be self-enforcing. But if we, if somebody does have an issue with somebody else, I think seventeen is useful in that it allows for due process. And I think, so I think overall, in its entirety, it's a very useful document. It brings things together. We don't have to search for it. It's a good piece of orientation. And should there is a complaint, I mean, Paul, if ever I have a complaint against you at a council meeting or anywhere else, I have a due process. We never have a complaint, basically, no. I, you know, I've been around, there's been lots of stuff I would, in a former life, would have found useful to have something like this, because some behaviors, both in meetings and representing the public at conferences, were just implorable.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I guess, but to Councillor Javecov's point, the public, are the people who elect us? Public are the ones that, there is an absolute process that if somebody's going to be moved off of council, there's a strictness in terms of how that, and when that scenario can happen, and I don't think we're talking about that, to me, here. It's about the policy of when you need to engage and inform somebody in terms of the board having direction in terms of actions, activities, or interactions, that you want to have that ability for clarity in what those expectations are.
Question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Defeated? On the motion, are you ready for the question? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Let me get to the next one. Or anybody that's ready, go ahead. Councillor Schuman?
So I would like to move the recommendation with regards to our climate action charter, that council continue as a signatory to the climate action charter and continue to accept the commitment, actions, and understandings that are entailed by that signature.
Seconded, Councillor McFadden. Ready for the question? Councillor Wilbur?
Just a question, is this a policy? The climate action charter?
Through Your Worship, it is not, but what my report is telling you is that many of the policies that are covered in the May, what was to have been, April twenty-seventh policy review, carbon fund, offset purchasing, are actually tied to your commitments at the climate action charter. So I'm just saying they're integrated. You may not have got to that because Brenda likes to put my recommendations last in the lineup. So, you know, you have to read through her report and all of the policies before you get to my recommendations. But regardless, I'm just saying, and for the reasons I outline in the report, that if you are, if you are signatories to the climate action charter, it sets a set of commitments that are partially actualized in the carbon fund, the offset purchasing, they're integrated, is what I'm saying. So that's your base level decision, is actually whether you're going to continue to obligate yourself or not.
And I just made the motion that we continue to obligate ourselves.
Thank you. Councillor Javecov?
So I guess it's pretty hard for me not to agree with reconfirming our signing onto the charter, because just for the simple fact that if we're not signed on, we don't qualify to look to senior governments for grants.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So it's kind of a, what do you call it, a carrot? Or a stick? Or both? I guess a stick.
Carrot cake.
If you guys don't sign on to this charter, you don't get any money from the province or the feds. So for that reason only, I have to sign on.
Got you. Thank you. Further questions? Further comments? Discussion?
I am sorry, I must apologize. I have followed the good advice of Brenda in getting ready for meetings and making this stuff a PDF file, and my colleague Cheryl to the left here is saying, "See Jim's memo," which I can't find Jim's memo.
It's the last attachment.
Very, very...
After all of the important stuff?
Last attachment of...
Very last page? Page...
Or is it two point two?
It'd be the last three pages or eight pages or something?
It's the last attachment of two point two.
Oh, page twenty-nine. Okay.
So just another question, like, this is a long dissertation of all of the aspects of a lot of the other policies, like the carbon fund and that. So does this make all of these other policies just carte blanche approved, or?
There's a recommendation for each one.
Like, if we want to make some changes to the carbon fund policy, are we going to hear that, "Well, come on, you've just approved it in the climate action thing"?
Scroll down, but there's another recommendation for each one.
Partially, yes. If you read the report, some of the elements of all of these things are actually commitments from the climate action charter, and some of them are not.
That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, I have no problem with signing on to the climate action policy that the provincial government has, but there's other aspects. So maybe we should leave this policy till last, till we go through some of the other stuff.
Well, I don't think...
So just let, Jim?
Yeah, I don't know that you can, it's going to be very problematic if you give me a direction to violate the signed commitments that you've agreed to. That's going to be a problematic thing for you guys to ask.
So we need to go through them, endorsing the first part of it, and then having the conversation around...
If you are truly going to remain committed to the climate action charter, it's going to significantly limit what you can do around these other policies that are next. That's absolutely true.
Right.
Unless you're going to tell me that you're going to sign the chart, the climate action charter, but you're going to ignore the obligations that you undertook, which would be a very problematic thing for you to direct me to do.
Right.
Now, my motion says we're going to...
Further discussion?
Well, I just apologize. I, you know, I just found it. I read through the policies, but I didn't read through Jim's stuff here at the end. That's a confession. I did look at the policies and was thinking about the policies. See, it talks about here, the policy, as I read it, this is now the policy about carbon neutral, talks about the corporation, right? And its reduction. But in part, now, see, this is where the stuff, you know, one thing goes to the other. So I'm, like with Paul, I'm very leery of this, because in Jim's report here, let me find it, it talks about commitment to community-wide actions, okay? How does community-wide actions link with corporate GHG, right? I mean, when I read the report in February, it was clear from that report that the GHG from the community had, per capita was unchanged. And that is a big, massive job, but the only thing we can really control is our corporate emission, right? That's, and so the carbon neutral, the climate action charter, and again, I open for correction here, is that not a commitment that the corporation is making about its corporate affairs? Then I get confused with linkages to community.
So my memo is a nine-page report that draws all of the lines together for you on how these things are integrated. That actually took about forty hours of staff time from support staff to help me write it. I can't summarize it in two sentences, and I can't do anything about those who haven't read it. So just to take a stab at it, the government is integrated. They haven't just asked you to sign climate action charter, they've also regulated things like climate action targets in your OCP. So our OCP's been amended to be compliant. It has targets for the community. It has targets, it has statements of purpose, it has statements of aspiration, and it has specific ties to items like density in the OCP. It's how the province asks you to get at the community, even though you can't get at it simply through your corporate operations. It's a really complex thing. It was difficult to reduce it to nine pages of just what you needed to know. I could give you five hundred pages.
Councillor Javecov?
Okay, then, we'll go, I'll go through this, the notes that I've made. I guess that's what this meeting is about, eh? Reviewing these policies?
Yep.
So I will review the concerns that I've highlighted here, if not for everybody's benefit, at least for mine.
Perfect.
So carbon neutral in point one here, it says carbon neutral by 2012. I guess we didn't achieve that. Is that correct?
No, you did, and you've got it proudly on your logo, if you've got a city of Dawson Creek.
So how did we achieve it? By buying credits?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess that's my first point. To me, if we're buying credits, that's not really truly meeting the intent of, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and that type of thing. So that's where it, that's where it comes in, that we need a made-for-Dawson Creek solution as a, a solution to achieving these reductions. And some of the things that we can do, LNG vehicles are something that we can pursue. Westport Innovations in, with Ford have now developed an F-150 that's on LNG. And talking to the local Ford dealer, they're only about $5,000 more than a regular F-150. The problem is, we don't have a filling station here. They've got a truck here, they have to go to Grand Prairie to fill it. That's something that we could work towards, instead of paying carbon offsets, which to me is an artificial way of achieving greenhouse gas emissions. In my opinion, that's how I feel, eh? And doing something like converting to LNG vehicles is something that's proactive and significant. Reducing flights, I don't know. Do we get charged for the emissions for each flight we take? Like when we're calculating...
I don't know, they ask that. Peter?
It's not under the province's scope currently for your traditional services inventory, so as far as I know, it's not.
So the flights are free?
Yeah, but it's probably something the province will look to...
So, but if we, if our objective is to be conscientious about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, that would be something that we could do, is reduce the number of flights we take.
Well, if you want to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions to nothing, stop doing any business. I mean, obviously, you're...
Now, I don't want to debate with you, because I could debate with you all day long. The first debate I would have is the comments of, you know, there's a scientific consensus, because I've got a document here from a scientist that doesn't agree. And I looked, I did a Google on the computer, and there are hundreds and hundreds of comments just like this. So I don't think it's a consensus, but I'm not disputing the fact that we've got some issues. But I guess my point is that I would like to see something made here showing a real, true commitment to do something significant to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions.
Isn't that what your carbon fund policy is about? And the consensus...
So is all this discussion redundant? Should I just shut up and agree with everything, or what?
No. The issue that we're here today to talk about is the policies that this council endorses and supports.
So is that... So, is that what I'm doing, or...
I hope so. I'm going along with you.
So, Your Worship, that's why the Climate Action Charter is so important. When you signed the Climate Action Charter, you said you agree there is a scientific consensus that there is man-caused climate change. That's your current position of council. And that continues to be the position of council unless you change it. So, no individual councillor can change that. Only council can change that. That's why I say the important documents, Climate Action Charter.
Councilor Jevakov?
So, okay. Another thing is planting trees. Trees absorb carbon dioxide, like we all know. And planting trees, you know, coming from a person with forestry background, would be a really good thing to do and very low cost. In fact, you know, if we could identify some areas with decent soil for, to grow trees, we could probably get them planted for free, you know, with volunteers and free seedlings. So, that's another thing. That's a kind of a direct action item. Another thing that we could do is reduce vehicle use. And if this is the city's objective, there may be opportunities to reduce vehicle use, to reduce equipment use, that type of thing. So, those are the kind of things that I'm talking about when I talk about a made-in-Dawson Creek policy. And, you know, you're working towards this whole issue to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and possibly you wouldn't have to pay for the carbon fund. So, that in number one, the fourth bullet down there, protecting the environment, can be done in ways that promote economic prosperity, too. LNG vehicles, you know, we sit on a pool of natural gas. Everybody in the world is talking about LNG. There's a new LNG plant being proposed here for Dawson Creek. We've already got a LNG station here, but it's not commercial, it's not for commercial fill-ups. My understanding, it's limited to who can use it, and it's not the public. So, there's an opportunity there. The other thing that I think we have to keep in mind is the densification in the city. I think we lose track of the importance of densification when we start talking about things like official community plans and development plans and that type of thing. I noticed when we're talking about the duplexes and, you know, during that period there, that densification wasn't involved, wasn't included in the discussion. So, that, the reductions, and I'll just read from the document that Jim sent here. Council's OCP identifies community targets for greenhouse gas reduction as being fourteen percent below 2006 levels by 2020, thirty-three percent below... I guess there's a typo there. That's on page three in the second paragraph. So, fourteen percent below 2006 levels by 2020, and then thirty-three percent below 2006 levels by 2020. That's probably 2030, eh?
No, I, it's not 2020. I actually don't know what it is.
Okay, I'll assume it's 2030.
But it's something in between 50 and 20.
And eighty-five percent below 2006 levels by 2050. And then, you know, the focus is on carbon neutral through the purchase of offsets. And I guess that's where I'm coming from. If we could have a made-in-Dawson Creek plan to reduce those, to become carbon neutral, and I don't know if we'll ever achieve that much, but through some sort of direct action here as opposed to purchasing offsets. Another comment that struck me was the third bullet in the middle of that page. It says, "Create complete, compact, more energy-efficient communities." And compact was what I sort of focused on there. And then, the last paragraph on that page, and I have it highlighted, "A staff report to the council of the city of North Vancouver provided a summary of actions that took place over this matter. With respect to acquiring offset credits, the province's Green Communities Committee has proposed a carbon-neutral framework. Local government staff provided feedback to the province on the framework through a regional engineers advisory climate protection subcommittee, expressing the desire that the framework provide feasible options for local governments to use their limited resources for climate action within their communities instead of purchasing offsets." Which I stopped there because that's what I'm talking about. So, there, I guess there's an issue of measuring and reporting and reducing corporate emissions. That's the city corporation. So, there, like, I don't know how that, how our emissions are calculated, what they're based on. But I think that's important. And I think there's a case to be made if you're reducing your flights, for example, that you can say, "Look, we're reducing our emissions because, by reducing flights." So, this comment here, this is on page four, the second paragraph, "The Making Progress option is widely accepted as a compromise between the province's goal of a carbon-neutral local government sector through offset purchases and local government's desire to direct local funds towards the projects of local benefit." So, I think that sort of reinforces my comments here that, you know, there's other people that see the benefits to doing something local, a direct action, as opposed to buying offsets. Those in the Making Progress category generally place their, I forget what the acronym is, CARIP, rebates into a dedicated fund to conduct energy-efficient and emission reductions projects similar to Dawson Creek's carbon fund. So, that reinforces again that there's an emphasis on doing, you know, local projects. And these projects, I think, will go a long ways, and it'll demonstrate our commitment to trying to make a difference. So, I got a comment in here that new energy-efficient projects such as the chiller, compressors, and condenser need to apply to those things as well, to use that money. And then I have a comment in here that we had a presentation on the energy efficiency stuff here, I think, at the last meeting. And I'd like to see a report on that, not just the the report that was presented, but I'd like to see the actual numbers, the costs, including staff time and everything. And I don't know if that's available, but that would be interesting because I think these projects also have to be cost-effective. Like, I don't think we should be spending money that we can't recoup on these projects. I think that's in our position. I don't think we've got the luxury of having that kind of money in the city. Is this any value for me to keep going through this? Or, like, is everybody else read and analyzed this thing?
Yeah, I'm having a blast. Go ahead.
Keep going?
Yep.
We'll let you know if you're, we think you're hogging the airtime, but other than...
Every once in a while, I will start talking louder just in case somebody's dozing off.
Just as long as you spend as much time with fiscal gap, I'm good.
So, I guess, you know, one of the questions I wrote here is, and that's after it says, "The conceptual framework is that end-of-life replacement schedules are integrated with a five-year financial plan and funded in the context of council's identified priorities. The carbon fund, however, is planned to support the incremental cost of energy-efficient alternatives to less energy-efficient equipment." So, I don't sense that there's a way of funding new, modern equipment with improved technology that uses less energy. Say, you're changing a pump in the, at the pool. You know, a new pump will be a lot more energy-efficient than one that was installed ten years ago. So, you know, it should be considered in that, for use out of that fund.
It is.
It is?
Councilor Jevakov, are you into the notes past the second recommendation?
I'm on page six.
He's just doing his...
Just going to go through it all? I just, I was just wondering if we should deal with the...
Am I on the carbon fund now, or what?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm just wondering if we should deal with the recommendation on the floor and move on to the second.
Has there been any votes?
We haven't had any votes.
We haven't had a vote.
There's a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, I get that.
On recommendation one.
On the recommendation one. But the issue was, that was expressed by council, was that if they accept that all, then there's components within that that they can't have any discussion on.
Okay, so, can I have clarification then from staff? If that's recommendation number one, then we have four other recommendations that break those things out that council wishes to discuss, that, how those are laid out. Are they not then separated in other recommendations?
So, Your Worship, I think the ruling from the chair, as I understand it, is to properly understand the ramification of how limited your options are. If you reconfirm the Climate Action Charter, that you probably need to hear Councilor Jevakov's concerns and anyone else's concerns on any of these matters so that you can judge the impact of the first decision. And I think that's what you've...
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if, what I heard, so, we had some concerns raised that if we adopt the Climate Action Charter and endorse that, it restricts some of councillors, the councillors' views and opinions on it, tying their hands on some of these other components. So, Councilor Jevakov wanted to expose his views on all those others so that that could be taken into consideration when we vote on the Climate Action Charter. Did I get that right?
I just didn't want to be hamstrung in some of these other policies. So, but the Climate Action Charter, I mean, obviously, we have to vote for it if we want to get funding from senior government, so...
So, I was just giving some discretion here just for you guys to have that conversation now before we vote on the charter, and then it ties you up on the other side.
Yeah. My main concern with the Climate Action Charter, the write-up here, is that I would like to see us incorporate a made-in-Dawson Creek proactive, direct-action policy for reducing greenhouse gas as opposed to buying offsets.
And I think Jim's point to that was that the complexities of what we're tied to under the provincial guidelines of the charter, of what we can do locally, become very complex. And some of that's built through our OCP, and Jim, go ahead.
Actually, I'm clearly remiss here because I didn't attach to my report, because we already have a ton of stuff in the report. I didn't attach to my report a document that you commissioned and adopted called Getting to Carbon Neutral. And it talks to all of the things Councilor Jevakov is talking about, except the LNG vehicles, which have come along since. But it's exactly about how low can we drive that number that you would have to purchase an offset if you wanted to be carbon neutral? So, that's a planning document that staff is working off of, and it's up on the website and all that kind of stuff. But I didn't reproduce it here because I didn't understand what we were going to get to that point. But that is a document that is very helpful in regards to the individual efforts. What it doesn't speak to, but my report does, is the concept that when you get to the final number, whatever that is, you've driven down greenhouse gas emissions to the lowest level that still fits within your service commitments, your plan for what to do for the community. At the moment, the only way you can purchase offsets is on the market. It's a bought-and-sold commodity of certified projects that you have to buy into. The Climate Leaders Group, that's referenced in the North Vancouver staff report, has also made great progress in getting local government projects properly authorized, or certified and authorized to qualify as offset projects. So, some things have not made the cut, like tree planting has not made the cut of something that can count. You could put your money towards it, and it would count as an offset purchase. But the Regional District next year will bring on no unforeseen difficulties. They'll be bringing on a gas capture process at the landfills that is a qualifying offset. So, you could put your money there, which is a landfill you use. It's basically your services as well. And that would count as the offset rather than buying it on the market. In the future, you may be able to do so. Right now, the only thing that's quote pre-authorized for municipalities to be able to purchase as though it was an offset on the market is the diversion of organic waste from your waste stream. And since council's taken a pass on recycling generally, it's not something that you're ready to take advantage of. For now, you could, starting next year, instead of paying X amount of dollars to somebody in Chicago who is selling you offsets, you'll be able to put it into the Regional District project and qualify as carbon neutral. The hope would be, at some point in time in the future, you could get certified and authorized for one of your own projects and put it directly there. You're just not there yet. So, the, I'm not recommending that you decline your position as carbon neutral by going to Making Progress. I just think that would be bad messaging, but that's a... You can sign the Climate Action Charter and still make the decision to go to Making Progress instead of carbon neutral. That means you don't have to buy an offset anywhere. That's a choice that you could make. It's, what did we spend, fifty, maybe, in offsets this year? What's the budget amount?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two thousand. So, you'd be giving up a lot to keep that sixty-two, but if that's what you feel you need to do, that's a decision council can make.
And I think we get back ninety-eight.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Jevakov?
Well, you know, I mentioned the pick... Well, you know, I mentioned the pickup trucks, but Westport has been developing engines for equipment and trucks for years. They have, they focused on the states because they've got corridors there that have filling stations. An outfit in Quebec with 300 transport trucks have just converted to LNG, because their routes are equipped with filling stations. Those are huge savings. Plus, they're using our resource, our natural gas. So I think there's places there that we can make big gains. So anyways, as far as the climate charter, I don't have a problem with approving it. I would just like to see us do something, you know, not follow the other, the rest of the flock, but do something proactive here.
Thank you. So, are you good?
So, like I say, I'm not going to vote against the climate charter because I think we need to get money from the other governments.
Yeah, we do.
So, we can vote on that if you want.
Well, I've got a list of speakers here, and I've got Wilbur, Rogers, and Schuman.
Oh, I just, Counselor Javatkov had mentioned the planting of trees, and interesting enough that a resolution was passed pretty much by everyone, I think. There was a handful of people that voted against it, but that isn't working. And so they want that discussion with the province, that they come up with some other plan, because this planting of trees is affecting, having a ripple effect in other areas, and it's not working, so I find that interesting. But too, I don't think that we're just following. I think it's very clearly stated here, and it's very clearly stated when you're at places like UBCM and NCLJ, or you're talking to a provincial government, that we're leaders in this, and other people are trying to catch up to where we are. So I don't think we're just following behind, or we're just accepting something. I think we're leaders in it, and I think those that are, you know, made, claim to be what, the making progress or whatever, are actually looking to what we're doing to follow that and be productive in how they're participating. So, I mean, I fully support it, and I just think the benefits outweigh anything else, and we'd be very silly not to report with it.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I first started reviewing the policies and I got to the Climate Action Charter, I went, "Holy cow, this thing's a monster because it's all over the place, because you've got your carbon fund and your offset purchasing, and then we have a policy that says we'll, if we've got to purchase offsets, that they won't just be any offset, they're high-quality carbon offsets." And then I started looking at it, and I did come in, and I talked to Mr. Schute, and I said, "I've got a great idea. Why don't we start a business where we can actually have our own, and have people invest into a business where we can actually start selling carbon offsets?" And that's what Mr. Javatkov is talking about. And then I did find out that what a bitch that is, because like you say, you have to go through a whole process to be certified for it. So I look at things like the government saying, "You have to belong to this," but when it comes down to you guys being innovative and creative with the carbon, with carbon purchasing of offsets, and if you would like to theoretically grow your own offsets, sell them to other people, take their money that'll help come in and pay for putting up, like, go to the extreme, like a wind farm or something like that. We, you know, theoretically, if we want to start a wind farm, we could have people investing into the wind farm, and we're selling them the offset credits. Why couldn't we do something like that? And then I got all the bad news that it's too much, too much work, in one sense, to make it viable, and that you've got to pretty much go to California and buy them off of the stock market, through the stock market. And I don't think that's right either. So I know where Mr. Javatkov's coming from.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I mean, I put up my hand, I don't know, half an hour ago or something, with regards to remarks made a half an hour ago, so it's kind of hard to remember everything that I wanted to. We have rules around the offsets. Like, buying vehicles doesn't qualify. It just, it doesn't. It's something you're going to do anyway, so it doesn't actually qualify as an offset. And so there's all these planting trees. You plant a big forest of trees, and then, oops, now there's a, you've self-sold all these credits, and now, oh, a fire happened, and now all those trees are gone. And so trees don't qualify. Like, there's a big list of how these things are qualified as quality offsets, and that they're actually going to, you know, reduce carbon like we're paying into them, so they will. So there's that, and, you know, as far as the projects that we could do around here, I'm full of ideas, projects we could do around here, but you have to invest the money, and you've got to build that project, and you've got to figure it all out and go through all those processes, like what you're talking about, in order to qualify as an offset. So, you know, our best bet is hoping that we can eventually, you know, start reducing the amount of organics we're sending off to the landfill, maybe get some action out of that, and to support the regional district in their efforts to have their methane project be certified, so.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Javatkov?
Just to comment on the, what Shelley was talking about there, about trees not working for CO2, or CO2 use?
Not saying they don't work for that. That's not what I was saying. What I'm saying is that the ability for them to purchase them as offsets, exactly what Cheryl said. There's, they're now having issues about trees being planted on land that could be used for agricultural uses. There's, so there's a whole gamma of ripple effects that have happened by allowing trees to be purchased for offsets. And now they're seeing the ripple effect of that, and now communities are saying, "Hey, wait a minute, this isn't working. We need to go at this differently." That was where I was getting at.
Okay, so I read the media report that Lanapopum, who's an NDP MLA out of, on Vancouver Island, identified this issue, that this growing trees was becoming a real problem because it was affecting agricultural land. Now, Lanapopum was one of the real strong objectors to any changes to the ALR that happened here last year with creating Zone One and Two. So I guess I feel that's a political thing that enters into these organizations, that, you know, she has the strength in numbers for support and brings this up, and it's, to me, anybody that objects to planting trees needs to revisit that thought seriously, because plants are what use carbon dioxide. I learned that in grade one, when they were teaching it back 50 years ago, more than that, 60 years ago.
No, no.
So, so, you know, advocating that planting trees is no good, to me, is, I feel, is very dangerous.
I think the...
But we're not disagreeing with you. We're just, I'm just saying...
It doesn't qualify as...
It doesn't qualify.
A good standard of offset, because it can burn down at any moment, it can reach maturity, it can be logged, you know, it's not, it doesn't... What is that, what is that word, Jim? It doesn't have the, longevity comes to mind, but that's not the word.
It's not high quality.
Permanency.
Permanency. Doesn't, trees don't have permanency.
Well, apparently, there's carbon offset projects for planting trees down in South America, so I don't know.
They're not quality. That's not quality.
Well, that's not quality. Anyways...
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say about climate.
Thank you.
The Climate Action Charter, I agree that we have to approve it. I think there's some room for interpretation on what we can do, and if there's not room, I think we need to start trying to make some room.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
I think Shelley Hatterton.
Yeah, no, I was just going to add that when the city chose to purchase carbon offsets, it was because it was the most cost-effective way to be carbon neutral. And in 2012 and 2013, the first year, we purchased offsets from the Pacific Carbon Trust, and then last year, it was from offsetters, and most of the credits that we purchased were B.C. I think there was a few that were Canadian, but we did not go offshore, and that was because we wanted high-quality credits. Now, if you want to get rid of that, I heard that you can get credits out of India for two bucks.
For saving tigers or something?
I'm not sure what it is, but that would be contradictory to our policy, so it's the cost-benefit thing that we look at as well.
Thank you. Counselor Purcell?
Yeah, well, thanks, Paul, because I've had a chance to read that report I was feeling badly about that I hadn't read from Jim. I do apologize again about that. I read through all the policies, and I thought, oh, that's over, but any dummy would see that the page numbers are listed on the left. And I'm glad that there wasn't an argument about whether there's consensus of opinion between staff and elected member, but you can argue with me anytime, Paul, about that, because I am firmly convinced that there is a consensus of opinion amongst scientists. Not unanimous, but an overwhelming consensus, but that's just a side comment. I think one document that Counselor Wilber referred to some time ago, that she thought would be good for maybe new councillors, I wasn't sure, or all the council have become aware of, it might be a suitable thing for one of the COW meetings, is the dashboard and all the things there. I think we need to discuss some of those things from the point of view of the efficacy of some of those ideas, and maybe brainstorm some new ideas and see what's working, because as I said earlier, the, you know, the corporation has a pretty direct control of what it does. The community, I think the corporation has a role in educating, making awareness, but I don't see any evidence of pickup, if I can use that expression, by community. So I've read the report now, and I think that, I'd just like us to somehow, for you to reflect on this dashboard, and maybe we should have a chat about that, just how's it going, what's working, new ideas, what ideas have been tried, and maybe we don't do that. So I think what has been alluded to here is that if we approve this climate, Climate Action Charter, commitment to that, there's a whole bunch of things that flow from that. And that is fine with, for me, with one caveat. Certainly, staff is charged with the responsibility of bringing action to the direction, but I believe that the degree of resourcing of those actions is a council decision, and the, you know, we would said, yes, go ahead, that our staff does its thing and does it well, but we also have the responsibility of resourcing, and therefore, we need to understand what we're resourcing and the degree to which we do that. I think that's a part of the role of council. So thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion that council continue as a signatory to the Climate Action Charter and continue to accept the commitment actions and understandings that are entailed by that signature. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. Item two is the carbon fund, and we have the recommendation two. Counselor Wilber?
I will make the motion to council reaffirm the carbon fund policy with section 6.5.1, reworded to read, "Priorities should be given to projects that can deliver the greatest energy and emissions reductions and avoided cost savings per dollar invested."
Okay, Counselor Schuman? Discussion? Ready for the question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Javatkov?
I was going through it there when you guys...
Sorry, Paul, I cut you off.
I thought you covered it off earlier.
I was trying to wrap my head around where you were going.
I think I know he wants to have cost-effectives written in there somewhere.
So, the measuring and reporting, like I say, I'd like to get a report on the energy reductions, but a complete report, not the one that we saw, but one showing all the costs that are associated with it, direct and indirect. So I don't know if that's possible or not, but... So again, I would just like to reaffirm, you know, I think this is where there's some interpretation in what you can do, and I would like to see us do something ourselves. You know, one of the recommendations that was made here a couple meetings ago was to put our energy fund into a building fund, so we could use it for energy-efficient changes, you know, that are required, that are end-of-life type things.
But, and so I'm not sure if that, so I'm going to ask us through to Jim, that, so you referenced earlier that report that you guys work off that you didn't include in. Is there components within that, but also with the dashboard report, that could provide a more detailed overview or lens on some of those components that Counselor Javatkov was asking about?
So, the first thing you did preparatory to meeting your commitments under the Climate Action Charter was make a plan. How are we going to move towards carbon neutrality? Part of that plan was to make other plans. So your carbon fund policy is a result of your plan to get carbon neutral. It was one of the things you decided to do, plan recommended, and you decided to do, "Let's establish a fund that, no, that we will fund out of our greenhouse gas use." So every time we use greenhouse gas, emit it out, we'll put some money aside, we'll dedicate that only to projects that reduce putting out greenhouse gas. So that was part of what came out of the original plan. Your green vehicle policy came out of that plan. Your green vehicle policy would give a significant premium in scoring to an LNG vehicle. So if one, if an LNG vehicle was bid to you, Danny Shields bid an LNG vehicle, and Brown's bid a Silverado, you know, Asper would be able to charge probably two-thirds as much and still win in the competition under the green vehicle policy. That's if there was, the practicalities, as Counselor Javatkov is talking about, if there was a fueling station here. So that was an outcome of it. Your whole goal around this was to drive down those greenhouse gas emissions. So you made a choice to say, "When we are, when we are doing something, replacing standard light bulbs with LED, it qualifies. When you replace this old reciprocating chiller with a screw-type chiller that's modern technology, you're going to see another saving, and it qualifies to be funded by the carbon fund." So the, these are all steps that you're making towards driving that number down. They're all integrated, they're all, were all planned out in advance. We can give you that kind of history, the dashboard summarizes it in one spot, but even that doesn't look beyond it, you know what I mean? We can certainly do that. In terms of the reports Counselor Javatkov was talking about, yes, absolutely. We have to prepare them every year for the government anyway, so they can certainly come to you. In terms of the total charging, so your current budget model doesn't break down my time, Shelley's time, Kevin's time. Administrator's time is not broken down by how much time we spend on the carbon fund. That would be an entire piece of work to do that. That's just not your current accounting practice. If you want to change your accounting practice to that, you can, to something more like the unionized force, where every hour is allocated to a code. You could do that. It's a hell of a lot of work, but that's something you could do. Thank you, Sue. Did that answer your question, Counselor Javatkov?
I don't know. I guess I'd like to see the report. I mean, there's staff time that's, obviously, you're not going to go and ask everybody how many minutes they spent on this project, but there are staff that are committed to that program.
If we get a, if we get a direction at the end of all this for such a report, we'll get Peter working on it. get Peter working on it. We, as I say, most of, most of the pieces are already there. They're already required. We have to measure our greenhouse gas emissions every year. We have methodology for doing that. We paid once to consultants to give us the methodology, but staff apply the methodology, so we can do all of that for you.
And maybe that'll be the first step for us in terms of taking that, give that bit of information for council.
Okay, there's one comment here in Jim's report, and it's at the bottom of page five. A 3% annual energy intensity reduction could be targeted. I just didn't follow that.
So, what we're talking about here is the fact that the current carbon fund talks about things that will have that bang for the buck to pay off. It doesn't specifically refer to these avoided cost kind of issues. We have, as Counselor Parzol was saying, we have not the take-up in the community that would be ideal for them moving towards this, and we don't have it fully realized throughout entirety of our operation. It's all a work in progress. Part of it is resourcing. I've kind of got the flavor that bringing in a certain company from Calgary to do more consultancy work for us is not going to be well-received by council, so we're working a little bit slower because we're not hiring consultants to do something around, for instance, energy use per square meter of buildings, that kind of thing. They're next up when we get to them. So, all this paragraph is referring to is that there's still a lot that we are not doing, that BC Hydro and PNG are willing to partner with us on doing. It's just a question of working through all that, getting those partnerships, and starting to do it, but we're not there yet.
Thank you.
So, the conversion of vehicles, going to LNG vehicles is one thing, but you need a filling station first, a commercial filling station, so that's something that we could be working towards, you know, to get either one of the service stations, or PNG, or somebody to establish a place to fill up an LNG vehicle. On page six there, the second paragraph, and I understood that to mean that the, the energy fund could not be used for end-of-life equipment replacement. The carbon fund integrates with general capital project funding through the city's life cycle billing, facility and equipment planning. The conceptual framework is that end-of-life replacement schedules are integrated with a five-year financial plan and funded in the context of council's identified priorities. The carbon fund, however, is planned to support the incremental cost of energy-efficient alternatives to less energy-efficient equipment. So, you were saying that you could convert, or when you convert end-of-life to a more efficient, energy-efficient component, like a compressor or something, that you could use that fund?
Yeah.
But this seems to imply that you can't.
Which is bad wording on my part. What I was trying to do was differentiate it from the building fund you guys have set up. So, the building fund is unrestricted, so if we needed a new delegate desk, we would get a new delegate desk, potentially fund it out of building fund, but it wouldn't qualify under carbon fund because there's no reason to believe that a new delegate desk would be less energy-intensive than the old one. But if there was, if there was some way of building a new delegate table that was going to take less hydro, it would qualify. So, I didn't mean to imply that if something is at the end of life and is replaced by more efficient, it wouldn't qualify, it would qualify under the fund. I'm just saying, under the building fund, you could, the same money could be spent to replace like with like, whereas with carbon fund, like has to be better than like in terms of energy.
Are you good?
No, I'm still working on it. I'm only on part ways through here.
I just have some other questions, or I just wanted to...
Can I just jump in on something he said about LNG? Just to staff, what's the PNG project at the airport, Jim? Wasn't, I thought that was included a filling station?
It is LNG, but is for their bulk hauling. So, they produce LNG there, they truck it to Tumbler Ridge where they have customers for LNG.
Is it LNG or CNG?
Compressed.
That's CNG, you're right. Sorry, the out-of-gas one, which will be LNG, same deal. They're going to, they're bulk hauling it for commercial use rather than, rather than retail.
The airport is compressed natural gas, which can be used for filling, compressed natural gas fuel.
If we could get some fleets, like some of the major fleets in town to be committed to that, I'm sure we could...
It'll be exactly the same process that was gone through with propane conversion. Nothing really happened here about propane filling for vehicles until the school district went to propane.
You ought to have that economies of scale.
We, I just, I just look at where we're at. We're at the hub. We are north, going south, we're going Alberta. We're right in the middle of all of this stuff, and there's a lot of people in the trucking industry that have said, you know, if we had LNG here, we'd be buying our trucks.
But there's, but it's compressed natural gas. LNG is just a liquefied natural gas. Compressed natural gas is what they could use for their vehicles if they chose. It's there at the airport. Liquefied natural gas is...
But it's not available for me if I have a pickup.
No.
See, he was saying...
And I think it's just a demand, Paul, is why they haven't done it.
Well, it has to start someplace. Anyways, it's just a point that I wanted to bring up, but... I've just got a note here for interpretation. I, I'll read it out, and I must have been confused when I read it. However, a reality of our situation is that end-of-life replacements around facilities as dated as the city's core infrastructure will always carry incremental opportunities to move toward more modern, less energy-intensive technologies. So, I guess that just reinforces the fact that any end-of-life upgrades will qualify.
Should qualify, yeah, should qualify, unless some things end their life earlier than other things. So, you know, we're, we've been going from laptop to tablet, and we may go back to laptop, and there isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot of change in energy use.
Okay, the last one on this, on carbon fund. BC Hydro already partners to support equipment replacement where electrical savings can be realized, potentially for arena compressors, for example. The availability of the carbon fund facilitates such initiatives and integrates with the city's life cycle facilities planning in an effort to improve the city's operation and fiscal sustainability. So, that reinforces it again. I guess I, I was under the impression from discussions that we had when Mark brought up to put that money into the building fund, that the energy fund didn't, couldn't be used for end-of-life type things, so...
Well, it can, but for others it can't. So, in the arena project, for instance, you're going to be replacing some furnaces. Chances are really good that it will, they would qualify, depending on the existing technology, but you're going to be replacing some concrete, and it probably won't qualify soon, under carbon fund.
Even though, well, yeah, okay.
Even though they'd be upgrading the starter fuel, that's insulation.
You have to tie it to the energy use, so it just depends.
It's a question.
Without questions, you don't get answers.
Okay, so, the motion was to approve Jim's recommendation.
That's right.
And I guess this isn't the place to deal with equipment, so I've got no problem with it.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers and Counselor Parzol?
Oh, I'm good.
Counselor Parzol?
I was just going to say, I think we've dealt with the, there's been, many clear explanations have been given, council, about equipment, what would qualify and what wouldn't, and I don't think we need to. It's not denigrating what's been said, it's common sense, so I think we don't need to amend this recommendation to include equipment. It's been, it's very clear, and it enabled us in our last council meeting to do some juggling to preserve two community projects.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item three is Dawson Creek offset purchasing policy. Recommendation that council reaffirm the Dawson Creek offset purchasing policy. Counselor Schuman?
I move that recommendation.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion?
We already talked about it.
Yeah.
Counselor Jevakov?
I just had a couple of questions about it, too, and a comment here. The 3,490 tons of CO2, how is that measured?
By natural gas.
Well, that's exactly why Peter is here, to tell you the answer. He's been waiting patiently for an hour to tell you the answer to that. So, go on, or Peter.
So, our emissions are measured via our per unit energy use, which is BC Hydro, specific natural gas, each of those has an emission factor based on consumption, so it varies depending on how much fossil fuel BC Hydro buys from the Alberta grid in a given year, so every year is different, and the amount of natural gas repurchased from PNG has an emission factor that's set by the industry for natural gas emissions overall. And then, for liquid fuels, we have the same, so there's a biodiesel component that the province has mandated in their low-carbon fuel standard, and that's increasing every year, and so every year, the amount of emissions of liquid fuel decreases as well for diesel and for natural, for gasoline, it's basically whatever the standard of this area is. So, all of those are regulated by the province. They, they tell you what to use, and we just, we just use it. We have a software program that does it all for us, so the staff aren't involved in any of that.
So, we simply enter the amount of natural gas we use, electricity we use, diesel that we buy, and gasoline that we buy?
Yeah, so all those, all those figures come from external sources. Co-op provides all the fuel, because we buy fuel from Co-op. PNG supplies all our natural gas, so those numbers go straight into the software. Staff, we, and staff aren't involved at all. They requisition directly from the software provider, from PNG, and as well from BC Hydro. So, once a year, they, they update their file, and month, they do it month by month, but then, once a year, they do a reconciliation.
So, just those four things are what we base the emissions on?
Yes.
And all other 182 signatories to the Climate Action Charter? That's how it's done in BC? That's the provincial framework?
Greenhouse gas emissions come from energy use.
And if you actually hadn't asked that question, I was going to supply the answer anyway, because Peter's been waiting to answer.
Thank you, Peter.
It's interesting to me, I mean, if you, if you think about it, I guess there's nothing else that burns greenhouse gas or creates greenhouse gas.
Well, actually, Counselor Parzol, at this point, mayor may not bring up this topic that every time we fart, we're releasing nothing gas.
Or have pets.
So, you know, there's all sorts of other things that could be measured that aren't.
Them dang goldfishes.
Breathing. The major contributors to CO2.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim.
So, electrical, I mean, the only way we have to reduce that is by putting in more efficient fixtures or whatever. Same with natural gas. With diesel and gas, there is a significant opportunity there to reduce emissions. So, there's our opportunity to do something made in Dawson Creek. Hey, we could be on cutting edge. How many other communities in BC are converted to natural gas?
Now, keeping in mind that for compressed natural gas, there's, the province has a formula for what you have to calculate, the emissions from each liter of that at. So, the gap has to be pretty significant between what you're counting as greenhouse gas emission for compressed natural gas to diesel, say, to pay for a conversion. And we could look into that, what the formula is.
Well, the formula is one thing, but there's, should be a substantial savings in fuel costs.
How about electric vehicles? We'll just move all to all-electric. We've got all these great plug-ins all over the place. That'll just wipe it right out.
Well, the market, the market determines the pricing. There was a time, of course, when diesel was considerably less expensive than gasoline, and it's the reverse, so the market decides what stuff is worth over time.
Thank you.
Well, natural gas is cheaper right now than diesel.
Right now, key word.
So, as far as the offset purchasing policy, is this what, we're just going to continue to do the same, or was there some offset purchasing that we're going to identify as better, more effective, or?
I think the suggestion was why it's cost-effective.
I like the $2 stuff from India.
My motion was to reaffirm...
But that's not very local, Counselor.
So, if you look at your policy, your policy says you will, you're interested in high quality, and you're interested in local. So, actually, each year, we bring you our proposal on what to buy.
So, we get another kick at it before we spend the money?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll support it, then.
Counselor Parzol?
Yes, I'll just add, add to the fact that the opportunity of more local stuff is emerging, and that might give some people more comfort.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Do you want to have a few-minute break? We've been going on for almost two hours.
Oh, that is lovely.
Well, your worship, you only have two more items.
Go and create some greenhouse gas.
Two items left from the April 27 meeting. If you could get them, then your backs need to be moved. Your time machine would have moved to today.
We'll get, we'll get through these last two recommendations.
I don't want to give Paul a chance to refresh himself.
So, Counselor Schuman?
I would move that the green operating practices policy for municipal buildings be amended as suggested by Counselor Jevakov.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Jevakov?
Okay, I agree with that one. Thanks for putting that, Jim.
The rest of us want to discuss that, not me.
It does say purchasing more...
Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five is our green vehicle policy. Oh, that was Counselor Jevakov?
I was thinking, too obvious.
Move along, number five.
Move, Counselor Wilber?
Moving number five. The council amend the green vehicle policy by establishing a target of 20% below 2007 levels by 2016.
Counselor McFadden, discussion? Ready for the question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Jevakov?
Well, this is where I'd like to...
What was, quote-unquote?
I only got one highlight in this one. It's only one page left. I'd like to see somewhere that we start looking at natural gas as a vehicle fuel. You know, I mean, the pickups, the F-150s are out now, there's one here in town, so, you know, if we could be proactive and maybe start working with PNG or partnering with them, for lack of a better word, and getting a filling station, a commercial filling station, and start being serious about it, because, I mean, there's a lot of other benefits, spin-off benefits, to using natural gas here. The fact that we're supporting the industry that supports us and the cost of it. And, yeah, it might go up in the future, but I wouldn't hold my breath. I don't think we're going to, any of us here are going to have to worry about high-priced gas.
But Bullet Three says purchasing more efficient vehicles and fuels, and wouldn't that be a component in there, to me? Jim?
So, as I understand it, once you're through with these, you're also going to direct... them a more detailed report on the carbon fund expenditures, an update on the dashboard, and you could certainly ask for a report about what would be necessary? What would be the conditions for success to convert some or all of our fleet to compressed natural gas?
Okay. Well, I'll add that in then as part of that report for you.
So what is the dashboard?
The dashboard is a, is a one-page summary of how we have flowed from your original decision to address sustainability down to all, all the things we're doing now. It's meant that when you look at it, you can sort of see the hierarchy of how things integrate.
Brilliant.
What's been our success in this?
Counselor Parslow?
And Paul, you'll have another marathon session once you've read it, okay?
Have I seen it before?
I don't know. It was post your time here, but I know that when Counselor Parslow last looked at it, it generated way more questions than I had time for at that particular time.
Actually, it's a good document. It is a good summary, nicely presented. I think we should just hear, hear from staff what's worked, what's not working, are there some new ideas? So there.
Counselor Wilbur?
I just wanted to say to, to Counselor Jevetkov, with the vehicles, I mean, it's not just a matter of switching over the fuel, it's also looking at us, do we have the mechanics in town to take care of them? Do, can our staff look after? I mean, there's a whole gamma of other things rather than just switching them over to be more cost-effective on fuels.
But my, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
My philosophy is that there's always a thousand reasons not to do it, but if there's a will, there is a way.
I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying we have to take that into consideration.
Most cost-effective.
We're agreeing to disagree. I won't swear at him.
You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Thank you for that. And so we'll take a brief five minute.
So was that also a motion to do all those, that direction?
Yes. Yes.
Moved by Counselor Jevetkov, seconded by Counselor Schuman, that we do all those other things? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. And we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go to 2.3, a seven-minute break. We have report 15072 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding May 11th Policy Review.
It's coming.
Counselor McFadden? Seconded, Counselor Wilbur.
Do we need to read it out?
That was for discussion.
No? Just for discussion.
All in favor? Opposed?
Okay, is that it? Have we done that?
Yeah, no.
So we're going to board number two now?
Council Policy Development.
And it was pointed out that Counselor Jevetkov wanted to rename Policies Develop Index to easily locate individual policies by topic, and we've already directed that that be done.
Number two.
Number two? Number three?
That was number, number two is standardized urban policy, forestry policy, and.
So there were two questions from Counselor Jevetkov. One question was, oh, sorry, a question from Counselor Jevetkov, a question from Counselor Wilbur. Counselor Jevetkov asked if this section applies to city-owned lands such as Rotary Lake. So, you know, and the answer to that is, this policy applies all over the place, and there's absolutely no clarity about that. It's pretty obvious once you reread it. So I think council might want to direct that we prepare an applicability clause here, because right now, some of it applies even to private property. Some of it applies, so that, those are trees that are on private property but are overhanging city property. Some of it applies just to maintained areas that the city maintains, and some of it applies to community groups, for instance. But you'd need a lawyer to tell you which right now, so we could probably clean that up in a couple of paragraphs that would explain what the differences are. Most you'll want to only apply to yourselves. A very few you want to apply to community groups. Like, for instance, you want community groups to, if they're replanting, you want them to plant approved species, so we avoid this trap of the dying poplars. And on private property, you want very little to apply to their trees, or at least this is what you've always wanted, is very little applies to their trees, just where they're inadvertently, you know, damaging city property.
So.
So moved by Counselor Schuman, seconded Counselor McFadden. Discussion, Counselor Jevetkov?
To me, it seems like it should apply to all city-owned property, even if it is, even if the property is managed by a community group. For example, Rotary Lake. I think it's important to have the consistency. What happens with those community groups is the boards change. You may have, you know, a real top-notch, experienced, educated, you could even have an arborist on the board, you know, for a year or two, and then all of a sudden, you may not. You may not have any expertise. So I think it's important for the city to maintain the control on city-owned property, just to make sure that there isn't something done that's not, you know, that's, that's no good, actually.
Okay, but that's pretty onerous, because what you apply to yourself is the trees have to be pruned annually in your maintained areas. So, you know, what we would normally say is, for volunteer group at Rotary Lake, you couldn't do anything without our permission, but we wouldn't necessarily require you to annually do things. That's why I was saying, you know, for a volunteer group like that, you might not impose the same onerous responsibility that you imposed on yourself for the maintenance of the trees, but you will, for instance, apply a standard that says they just can't take a chainsaw and go whacking in there. Know what I'm saying?
Well, I guess what I was implying is that the city should be taking the responsibility for that and directing the traffic. Or, you know, if, if there's something happens that, that the city wants done, the city has to be in control.
And I think that's the intent here, is we'll have administration.
Well, let us take a crack at that.
Bring that back to us, so we have some direction, but not so onerous that all of a sudden, we've created a bit of an opportunity for ourselves that we don't want.
Apparently, apparently Barry stayed for this, so he's taking that all under advisement.
I just came in, but I, I take whatever advisement.
Further discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, just to add to what, there's a limit to how many neighborly monkeys we want to carry on our backs, right? I mean, you should be careful.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Kerry? Thank you. Item two.
Oh, sorry. On that same policy, there was a question for clarity from Counselor Wilbur, sort of asking what the history was of this clause. So we've had an unfortunate series over the years of property owners who either were can-do folk who took care of obstructing trees all on their own, or who weren't, who applied to us to do it. We had two weeks of back and forth with one citizen who couldn't get her satellite receiver to pick up the satellite because of one of our trees that she wanted us to cut down. So of course, we didn't cut it down. Subsequently, it fell over and damaged her house, but that's a different story. You might even know what I'm talking about now that I said that. So yeah, the purpose, purpose of the clause is to say you can't do this on your own, and if you come to us to do it, we won't do it for reasons like you want to have a better view, or you want your TV reception to be better, or you want, the real can-do folk are business people, entrepreneurs. And if we happen to have a tree scape that interferes with their business sign, they've been remarkably proactive in getting rid of that tree scape, and the policy prohibits that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
However, in the rural areas, people seem to be a little more aggressive about this.
Apparently, in the rural areas, neighbors just grab guns and go hunting for whatever.
Get the varmint gun. Hey, for your conversation.
Nope, that was good. Clarify for me.
You ready for the question? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Kerry? Thank you. Item, next one is attendance at public events. Counselor Schuman?
Move that we reaffirm this policy.
Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion? Counselor Jevetkov?
My concern with this one was that in the past, there have been counselors that choose to attend an event, like a concert, where it's not official. It's not like you're not going to cut a ribbon, or you're not going to, you know, welcome the tourists or something like that, but they get their entry paid by the city. And, you know, I think people should be paying their own way. We get, I think, $4,000 tax-free money in our.
Something like that.
One-third of what we get, so over 5,000, between 5,000 and 6,000 of tax-free money. You know, that's what that money is intended for. It's for these little sort of extra costs. If we're going to reaffirm it, I would like to see it include some comment that this isn't meant as, you know, gee, we're all elected officials, we go to everything for free, you know?
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know who is abusing this policy in that way.
It's confidential. I can't say.
I don't know of anybody who is going off to concerts and, and things and getting their, their tickets paid for. If we're asked to be somewhere, they need representatives from the city. Like, I'm thinking of, I'm trying to think about something that may have been paid for. Maybe it was the RCMP, the dinner regimental thing. I think that we were paid to, we, our tickets got covered or something to go to that. But I don't, I, I can't think of, of anything, actually.
So you wouldn't have a problem then, just defining that a bit in the policy?
If the policy is fine the way it is, I don't think there are, is anybody abusing it.
When, when, to me, the way I read this is when council or mayor are invited to attend various community events on behalf of the city, then that's the overriding statement that says, city representation at the events is an important role of council, and whether it's at the meeting, the charity event, ribbon cutting, or for presentation, council of the city of Dawson Creek directs that requests for these representation at community events will be received and approved through the mayor's office, and that when a member of council or their spouse attends a community event on behalf of the city, then that ticket would be paid for by the city. But it's at the request of somebody asking their attendance.
So could we just clarify that in the, in number two?
That's the way I read the policy now.
The policies, yeah.
That's the wording of the current policy, what I just read.
I guess it's the interpretation there, to me. When a member of council and their spouse or partner attends a community event on behalf of the city, when is, what's, how does that, how is that defined on behalf of the city?
One, they are requested to attend, or invited to attend on behalf of the city. That direction comes to the mayor's office. And then if the mayor is either invited and/or a specific council, then it would be directed through the mayor's office, is the way I read both ones. But I, I, that's, and that's, and that's how the current policy is, so that's how I've.
Well, I've got a bit of an interpret, different interpretation for it. So I guess that's from my experience with other events, but.
And honestly, the only ones that I can think of in my year and a half that I've been in the chair of the mayor has been where I've been, never have I had one where it's come as a result of a local, attendance at a local event. It's only for travel outside the community and/or for those events, so that's outside the policy of attendance at community events. I haven't had one yet.
Well, if that's, if that's how you interpret this, and I have no problem with that. It's just the, sort of extending the interpretation a little further and saying, well, I'm a counselor and I'm going on behalf of the city.
Yeah, no, I think.
See, the Mike Duffy trial has just broken out.
On occasion, on occasion, the mayor and/or councils are invited, counselors are invited to attend various community events on behalf of the city. City, city representation at these community events is a very important role of council, whether it's at a meeting, charity event, ribbon cutting, or for a presentation. So the council of the city of Dawson Creek directs that, one, those requests for city representation at community events will be received and approved through the mayor's office, and when a member of council and/or their spouse or partner attends a community event on behalf of the city, their ticket would be paid for by the city.
Okay, I'll give you an example. A chamber meeting. The lunch is 50 bucks or whatever. Are all mayor and counselors requested to attend, or do they, do they get their meal paid for, or?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
If they attend.
And are they formally requested to attend?
There are delegate, there are representatives to the, well, we're board members, but then the delegates.
But board members pay their way.
I get an email every time I get an invitation.
I believe the city pays the membership fee for the Chamber of Commerce, therefore all of council, I think, can sit and go to those meetings?
You should all be on the email distribution list. So chamber lunching comes out, Kathleen blasts an email out inviting you all to attend. If you choose to attend, your ticket is paid for by the city. That's Counselor Jevetkov.
So is that the intent here?
That, certainly, that would be my understanding, that if council is being requested to attend on behalf of the city, then they would be paid.
Okay, but that's not the case here. There's a, Kathleen is saying there's a meeting, everybody gets a notice, everybody that's, has a membership in the chamber. So I, I go to a meeting, I haven't been formally requested to attend, I don't expect the city to pay my meal.
Okay.
So they pay for it yourself?
Counselor Parslow there? Counselor Rogers?
Yes, that's an interesting one that, because there are many functions in the community that we get invites for. Not, not all of them involve tickets. There is a designated member of council who's liaison to the chamber, in this case, it's you.
And that's legitimate to me.
Yeah.
That person is our representative there.
For the rest of us, I, I would wonder why, it's hard to say, it's hard to say, because there might be, there might be some legitimate community business that we think we should be taking part in the dialogue about, but then presumably, that should be cleared through the mayor.
Yeah.
I would have thought.
That's what the policy is.
Just trying to see how the policy would work.
You tell me every time I come over.
This, this policy puts a high onus on the mayor to be the bad person saying no. So suppose CAP comes to talk to the council about what drilling activity is expected in the coming year. That's information council should have, and I expect, you know, it would be difficult for the mayor to turn down any council who wishes to attend. The policy's a little bit, policy doesn't define that the invitation has to come from the community. So there has been occasions where the invitation comes from the mayor. So the mayor says, this is happening, I think you should all be there. We'll pay the ticket. But if you're going to give the mayor the right to approve anyway, you might as well give the mayor the right to decide a community event is in the council's interest and needs to go. It just puts a lot of weight on the mayor. The reason it does that is because the alternative is to put a lot of weight on Shelley or I to tell counselors that they can't go where they want to go, and I'm not up for that at all.
Counselor Rogers and Counselor Parslow?
Okay, your worship, I'm in a whole lot of trouble here, because I've been hanging out with the chamber people. I've had, I've, I went for a breakfast meeting with them, and I think there's another meeting tomorrow night. They encourage council members to be there, to go there. I've been going because I've been inquiring about the downtown revitalization and stuff. And if I have to get up in the morning and go meet them for a breakfast meeting, sure, I think the states should pay for it.
So I hope council didn't pay for your lobster fest ticket.
No, Mike Finch. No, Mike Finkel did, thank you, Mike.
But that's, that's the extreme. I mean, I can go and invite council and mayor to Lobster Fest. Does that constitute a reason that city would pay the $700 for, you know? I just would like to have some clarification in that policy, that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Parslow?
Maybe something that, I would say may help you with that. I mean, it's a difficult area sometimes, because you know, we've reaffirmed a policy at our first policy meeting that goes something like, that, and it is really, really related to our functioning as councilors and the need for information that helps us in our decision-making. We, we, we all have different levels of needs around different topics perhaps for, for information. So if, if a session's an informational session about something, and often the chamber staff is, is, doesn't that kick in that perhaps, hey, I, I really need to know something about this? Whereas going to the Lobster Fest, I know there's a lot of experts there, the Lobster Fest hall, who's got all sorts of opinions, but it's not a coherent meeting, you know what I mean? It's a party, right? Really, it's a party, party.
It's just like a concert at Encana Center.
Yeah.
What, what are you moving into there?
The, but the policy...
I, the reason I brought it up is because of my past experience. I was on council for nine years, and I've seen some of this occur in the past. That's why I brought it up.
So the policy is quite, uh, in my view, quite, uh, uh, clear. And that if, uh, someone is attending a community event and having the city pay for it, um, then that has to come through to me for approval, as the policy's written.
If that's the way you're interpreting it, I have no problem with that.
Well, that's number one. Right, it says, "Request that community events will be received and approved through the mayor's office." And two, sorry, Brenda, go ahead.
Um, just a suggestion, we can put "and" after number one, and then it does have to flow through you, it's not an "or."
Good, that would be, that would help.
Through the mayor's office and when a member of the council.
Okay.
So, that would, would verify that.
All right, I'm good with that. Do we need a motion with that?
Sure, to amend it, not backwards.
Move by Councilor Schuman, second to Councilor Wilbur, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you.
Hold that for one word.
Yeah, it's about, no, there's a couple of words.
That's the only kind of decisions we can make. Little tiny ones, we talk lots on them.
Your guys' meeting, I'm good to sit here. Councilor Schuman?
Under four complaints, I would like to make a motion that we reaffirm our policy on complaints.
Thank you, Councilor Schuman.
So don't you guys have any opinions on these things, or?
Councilor Parslow, second?
I will second it, and I have an opinion on this. I completely concur with staff's report. In every line item, having been in, uh, many positions where dealing with rumors and people not wanting to come forward, I absolutely agree, it's, it's a basic administrative law in this province, so I see no need for change. How's that for an opinion, Paul, okay?
Other comments, questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Uh, item, Councilor Schuman?
Under council conference attendance, I move that we amend the policy. Um, with regards to FCM, I would move that we, now that there's four years, that, um, my amendment would be the first year of the new council, everyone be permitted to attend should they want to. And then the next three, uh, FCMs, it would be a draw for the mayor and two councilors to attend in the next three years. So it would be mayor and council each year. Um, and then attending the first one, should they go and see value in it, then they could decide what, if they wanted to attend the second one. But otherwise, um, I'm in favor of keeping everything as it is with that amendment to the FCM.
Thank you.
Um, except, of course, as a new director, you would want NCMH changed to NCLGA.
Oh, and NCLGA, yes, thank you.
Okay, move, second to Councilor McFadden, discussion, Councilor Parslow?
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with that. I think, uh, the, the suggestion concerning the first year for FCM, I can buy into that. And I think everyone should have an equal chance, rather than leaving, leaving it two chances by a draw. And so... Okay, maybe I misunderstood you. What I understood...
How it is done now is, you have three years and six names. So, uh, the first two out of the hat get the first choice of which year they wish to go. Then they're exited, the next two get the choice of which year they want to go of the two remaining, and then the hapless, the hapless last two go to the one that's left.
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, misunderstood, Councilor Schuman.
Thank you. Further discussion?
All sits in the hat every...
Councilor Jevetkov?
Well, obviously, since I suggested these changes, I think there has to be some control on spending. Uh, if you look at the budget and the money that's spent on travel, it's significant, very significant. It's, uh, I think even in, it, Jim's interpretation, it would be enough to start affecting, uh, fiscal gap. For, the, the thing that we, like, there has to be a purpose, a reason to go to these meetings. And not a personal reason, but a reason that benefits the city of Dawson Creek. So what is the purpose, what is the benefit to send everybody to these meetings? I don't see a benefit. I hear all the time, oh, awesome networking opportunity, oh, it's great networking, and it's, oh, we're learning so much. But I don't see any of that brought back here. What are the benefits? I mean, specific benefits. Um, so I, you know, I think we can send, for example, to UBCM, the mayor and two councilors. And the, the rider is that, uh, um, the attendees provide a comprehensive written report describing the benefits accrued to the taxpayers of Dawson Creek. Then, you know, there's something tangible. Like, for example, there was a comment, I think Cheryl made a comment that, uh, the, uh, is it the MFA? Made a presentation at the last conference. So bring it back, bring the inform, in, information back, so that we know too. You've gone there as our representative, you've got that information. Bring it back, so it's tangible, so it's a benefit to us. You know, there's questions about it, and, you know, the solution is to bring in a speaker. Well, you're just there. So tell us about it. So, yeah, for another thousand bucks to the, the taxpayer's expense, we're, we're spending money that we don't need to spend. We've got a spending problem here. This is meant to deal with that. So as far as I'm concerned, we have to limit the amount of travel. We used to limit it back in the past. We had a policy where not everybody could go to everything. Because it was deemed to be a waste of money. So it was, it was calculated, the people that went would go and bring back the information. So I will not be voting to reaffirm this, it's a, a huge colossal waste of money.
Thank you. Councilor Schuman, then Councilor Wilbur?
In your opinion?
It's how I feel.
Councilor Wilbur?
Um, well, I think there is a benefit, uh, for UBCM allowing the mayor and all councilors to attend if they so wish. We don't, some don't, that's their choice. Um, same with NCLGA, for example. So we're hosting next year, but we're gonna say only two councilors can attend. I mean, there is benefit there. Um, and both of those organizations actually send out all of the information that takes place on all of these sessions to all of us, plus their monthly newsletters. But, I mean, if you want people to bring back reports, we can, because you don't want to attend, that's fine. But I don't think we should be limiting ourselves. I think there's educational opportunities there, and I think that if I go to a session and I learn something, and I better educate myself on how to represent my taxpayers, I think there is a benefit to my taxpayers in doing so. So, the limiting to two councilors, I, I think we should have the opportunity that the mayor and all councilors can attend, UBCM and NCLGA. And at this point, Councilor Schuman and I, when we attend NCLGA, or she attends UBCM, they cover those costs, not the taxpayers of Dawson Creek.
To our board meetings.
To our board meetings. Um, so, the, those things that we attend, those aren't burdened by the taxpayer to pay those extra expenses. And, um, I agree with the FCM, it should be, in the first year should be everyone, and after that, we continue on as we have for the three years. So I, I don't think that we should be limiting it to mayor and two councilors. I think we should leave it at the discretion, if someone doesn't want to attend, don't attend. If you don't want to attend, then we will bring back that information. But I don't think we should be limiting ourselves to the ability to educate ourselves and do better for our taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilor Rogers?
When you were saying that everybody should attend the FCM, like, we still have a choice not to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I think, I think the FCM is, the current, the current policy of, the current policy of FCM is mayor and two councilors.
But now we have a four-year term.
Yeah, but now we have a four-year, right? So, um, so that's, but it's still, we're not sending everybody to the FCM every year, right?
So do we need to include in what Councilor Schuman has put forward then? Or do I amend afterwards on UBCM and NCLGA that the mayor?
No, I, I put that in.
You put that in there, okay.
Brenda?
I don't believe we have a secondaire.
I'm seconding.
Wilbur? Sorry. Further discussion?
I'd like to hear the motion again.
Yes, so what I...
Okay, so my motion was to...
Brenda?
Yeah. No, no, I was just gonna repeat what I said.
Yeah, that, that policy be amended to reflect the popular term for three years to four. And to specify that all members of council attend FCM first year of the term, and subsequent three years events be assigned to two councilors per year in addition to the mayor.
Um, so I was reaffirming the, the current policy with that amendment, those amendments, and NCLGA in there, the renaming.
Okay, Councilor Jevetkov?
So is there a motion and amendment already?
No, just a motion.
Just a motion?
Reaffirm with, yeah, motion to amend.
The policy with the amendment regarding FCM.
And the change from three years to four.
So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we include a requirement for the attendees to provide a written or verbal report, um, to update the rest of council when they come back.
Councilor Rogers, second?
Would you actually look at the policy that's in the policy manual? It's there.
It's already part of our policy that we...
And we all did that this morning when we came in, after NCLGA.
Sorry, no, I think it was a comprehensive written report was what the words were, that, yeah.
We're not doing that.
Okay, no, that's different, written or verbal is in...
Written or verbal is in the current policy.
So we're good.
You, you, is it written?
Yes.
Written or verbal.
Or verbal. So, my, uh, amendment.
My amendment, a comprehensive written report describing the benefits accrued to the taxpayers of Dawson Creek. Now, reading further in here, taxpayers isn't a valid term?
Uh, so if your, your standard is how this benefited the taxpayer, firstly, your responsibilities are much broader than just to the taxpayer. Uh, but secondly, only the taxpayer knows what benefits them. Uh, so my suggestion was just that you, if you're gonna have this requirement, you make it to the, uh, four defined purposes in the act, why you exist. Uh, so that the report would have to reference how attendance at the, um, event furthered your responsibilities to provide for good government of the community, provide services, laws, and other matters for community benefit, provide stewardship to the public assets of the community, and foster the economic, social, and environmental well-being of the community. That's what the act says you're here for.
Okay, so to shorten it up, you could say benefits to the corporation of the city of Dawson Creek. And the act defends, defines that.
You could, yeah.
So the benefits, specific benefits, that's what I'm interested in. Like, you know, I hear the networking and stuff, and that's great. But if it's not relevant to the city operations here, then it's not a benefit. I mean, I network with lots of people about lots of things, but, and I learn a lot of things too. But what is relevant to the city?
Hard to measure that one sometimes, right?
Well, but I mean, there are specific things that, that you should be going there for. If it's just, uh, learning and networking for personal purposes, then why are we doing it?
Councilor Wilbur, Councilor Schuman?
Well, for a prime example, I think there's a huge benefit of attending, um, the Moosehide Campaign, and seeing how we, our community could benefit from that in violence against women, the Moosehide Campaign. Um, don't worry, I'll write, I'll get a writing thing to you. So the, uh, networking with our First Nations on reconciliation, I think there's a huge benefit to our community for that. Um, it's conversation. It's not someone up there saying, this is what you need to do. It, it's having that conversation with them and getting the feedback that they are coming to Dawson Creek next year, which they've never done before. But because we had those conversations with them, we, we encouraged them to come here and have further conversations. So there's lots that go on at these things that are about conversation and networking, because we get the opportunity to explain who we are and what we have to offer. And I think that is a huge benefit to our community, however, how, whatever that means to you, or whatever it means to the community, there's a benefit there. And you're not going to get that benefit if you're not in the room having that conversation.
Councilor Schuman?
And so your amendment is to take it from being a written or verbal to a comprehensive written report to council. I'm opposed to that.
Just on, on the benefits?
Because I can come here under counselor business and talk about what the benefits were and what I did at that thing without having to add another hour or two to the two or three or four days that I've already spent on city business at this event. If you don't choose to go to these things, Councilor Jevetkov, that's your decision. But we find, a lot of us that go to these things find benefit in it. And we're not there just networking and, and having a fun time. This is hard work, we have to leave our families, we have to leave our, some of us our jobs. And, and if you think that we're just off, you know, jet-setting around the, the countryside because, you know, it's fun stuff, you're wrong. You're wrong about that. And so if you don't want to attend anything, then don't do it.
So, uh, she can read minds? I'm not thinking that, so you can't read minds yet.
Yeah, I am.
But, you know, again, I'm just looking at the benefits for the city. That's what I'm looking at, not personal benefits.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment?
What's the amendment?
The amendment is that the, uh, attendees will provide a written report describing the benefits accrued to the city of Dawson Creek.
Thank you.
Brenda?
And a secondaire?
And the secondaire was Councilor Rogers?
Thank you.
Further discussion? On the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Defeated? On the motion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Next item.
Uh, I was opposed to that, I...
We'll get it recorded.
My thought process wasn't as speedy as, as Dale's.
You gotta stick with me.
I thought you just gave up.
So, well, I have too, but...
Uh, item seven, core values for the practice of public participation policy.
So on this matter, Councilor Jevetkov had asked for clarification around, uh, three, six, and eight. So right now, it's a two-stage process. The policy isn't general. So, uh, the policy is actually individually, um, directed by council. So if a matter, uh, strikes council as important enough to construct a specialized, um, consultation or public input process around it, uh, then you direct us, and we bring back a proposed communication plan for you on it. Uh, otherwise, each report has a small section on implementation and communication. Um, and we have some legislated processes, of course, around public hearings. So it is, um, it is not the case that the core principles for the practice of public participation are, um, generally applied to every time you are seeking public input. are generally applied to every time you are seeking public input. Sometimes you haven't enacted it, and sometimes there's legislation that supersedes it. So, that's the answer to the question.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
I would like to move that we reaffirm this policy.
Move councillor Parslow, second to councillor Wilbur, discussion. Councillor Parslow?
I really appreciate, I really appreciated it when Jim found this resource and brought it to council. When we need to consult on a broad scale over important issues, I emphasize big issues, not small issues, it's good to have sort of a framework to guide our setup of this, and this provides us a good framework. And it basically ensures the people, if they've participated, we've made some decisions, we'll share with them how we, how we took their advice or how we rejected it and why. And so, it's a backwards, it's a, it doesn't, it doesn't go into a dark hole. So, I really think this is a strong policy that Jim found and brought forward, and I, I would, I feel so strongly about this, I would die to, die to protect this one. That's a bit of an overstatement, sorry.
Jim, so, what you, don't look... You may have opened up an opportunity for the rest of council.
All those opposed?
I withdraw that comment.
What we've discovered, your worship, is it's pretty expensive. Like, it's a, it's a high-expense standard, and so you've applied it, you know, less frequently than you might have wished to, for expense reasons, so.
Thank you, councillor Jevkoff?
Yeah, I, I can't find this one in my, in my binder here, where I printed them all out and highlighted what my concerns were, but, because they're not numbered, eh, and I try and find something in here, like it's trial and error.
We're gonna be taking care of that.
We're fixing that.
Anyways, my, my concern, I believe, in that was, and I, and I don't think I wanted to change anything, but I, I just wanted to discuss public participation. Like, to me, having a public meeting and having only a few attendants isn't an effective way of getting feedback from the public. And I go back to when we were, when we planned, when, when the Incan Event Centre was decided. There was a process that we had, and we, we hired a consultant from far away, because that's where the experts come from. But we had a process where we targeted a bunch of different groups in town to ensure that we canvassed a lot of the, a lot of people in the city. And I, I forget how many we ended up talking to, but I, it was some hundreds, eh? And it all got rendered down to where we had a pretty good reflection of public opinion or public, you know, feedback. And that's where, you know, the determination that we, the people here wanted to be, wanted to have Dawson Creek as the event center of the north. And that's where the Incan Event Center came out and everything. But it was a real broad-based public participation thing, which was effective to me, and I, you know, I see so often that we have a initiative where there's, you know, a handful of people or a certain special interest group that's there. And it's hard to put any credibility in that. So, I just wanted to, you know, basically talk about that and the, you know, the process that we go through, eh?
I think the migration, to me, and having watched it now over the last year and a half, from how people engage with us, how people, we traditionally had public forums, to how we would engage and provide information to people. The world of communication and technology has completely turned that upside down in some ways of how we did things with that, engage, trying to engage people 10 years ago, even at that time, till today, where there's so many avenues available, I think about that, that we get, there's almost an overload of sources now where they get information on how they engage in it, sometimes to the detriment of us in terms of thinking that we're failing in some respects, not having that personal interaction, but because they're getting information from so many other sources from us. But, you know, the last, I honestly, I'm, I say that, but I was really encouraged by our last public meeting we had with the finance, with the budget meeting, Calhoun-Crook, two weeks ago. That was probably the best, I think, in my view, of attendance and interaction, where people just came and asked questions and engaged and talked, and, so to me, that was just a real good example of why you want to continue to find that way and try to continually to build it. So, I think it's a struggle, but I think we've always got to be looking for ways to push that bar higher, so I agree with you.
Thank you, so any further questions? Validate the policy? All those in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Next one, landfill policy, I think, I'm blocked here, so.
Yeah, it is.
And the point here councillor Rogers was concerned that our current fee is not covering our costs anymore. Councillor Rogers is correct about that. It's covering our advertising fee but not our administrative fee, and at one time it covered both. So, this is something that you might want to look at updating in the policy.
300 bucks, jerk it up.
Make that motion.
Oh, okay, I'll make that motion.
Not jerk it up, be specific.
Whatever I'm doing. I was asleep.
So, I'm sorry, we got a motion?
I think you did.
To review the landfill policy?
Yeah.
Seconded by councillor Wilbur?
I just had this in writing.
It is 300 and...
I was, thank you, I was gonna say, it's 300 dollars.
The motion should read, if you want to read that, it'd be jerked up.
So, just the, just the cost of the publishing in the newspaper has gone up to about that 300. So, you easily have another 150 or 200 dollars on top of that that is administrative cost. Used to all be covered by the 300 dollar fee, but the cost of the space in the newspaper has just gone up and up.
There was, so we've got, so we're gonna have a motion that we're going to ask administration to bring back a report to us to review the current landfill policy with some recommendations on...
Why don't we just skip all of that and just make a motion to make the admin fee 600 bucks? Double it.
Okay, the reason I was going there was, there was a purpose, my lips were moving there.
Sorry.
And I just speak to it very quickly, because it gets to, when I attended the NCLGA and Dawn Litstone gave a presentation, and he said, you know, communities today are now leveraging the increase in, so when we, when we rezone, when we make changes into our community that positively impact the value of land to developers significantly, there are communities now that are saying, should our community not share in that bounty of the increase in the value of property as a result of that rezoning? And there are communities that do that now, and so they say, okay, if that rezoning is now taking place and it's changing the value today from 60,000 dollars, that rezoning now is the value of that property today is 100 or 150 or whatever. Jim's gritting his teeth.
No, I'm grinning.
So, there's, there's some, there's some indications that now there are communities that are saying, our community is now benefit, your, our community now should, should realize some of the benefits of that to help offset the ever-increasing cost of fiscal gap and look at it as a revenue stream. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it or opposed to it, but it was an interesting concept that the, that he talked about as one component of impacting the revenues of your community as it relates to the business you do. And I, I'm not sure that it's something we shouldn't understand and consider as we move forward in the community as we face this development and ongoing pressure.
I hear you saying that, and then I'm thinking, okay, so, we're going into rezoning, and now we're thinking we're gonna somehow benefit, so is that gonna affect how we view that rezoning? So, now all of a sudden, yeah, everybody's in favor of rezoning because we're gonna get money out of it?
All I'm saying is that was just a, that was just a, that's a legal requirement, the way Dawn Litstone explained it to me. And I don't know enough about it other than hearing that presentation, but I wouldn't mind understanding it a little bit better. And so, when you talk about landfill policy, that's a consideration to me that should be thought of. Jim?
So, the reason I'm grinning is because, so what happens if you go through a long process called the Residential Development Committee, and a bunch of developers stand up and say, "What you're gonna do is gonna hack the value of my land back by half," and we do it?
Anyway.
Do we owe them money? But, yeah, Vancouver, for instance, does attach that, that value that you are, the rezoning is, is providing, and it has to come back in the way of community amenity, and we could be separately directed to bring you a report on that. Just keeping in mind, the more reports we're separately directed to bring back to you, the longer time before the first one you directed will come to you. But, what, what we're talking about here within the landfill policy is only parcels where you make a deal with a proponent, rather than reference to market. So, this is not a competitive process, this is, somebody brings you a proposal on a reserved piece of land, you like the proposal. The Act says you have to advertise that out to your citizens, that you've made this deal. Because they have a chance to say, "Well, council thinks it's a great idea, but I think you're getting tossed." So, you've always had the policy that the proponent covers the full cost of that, including your administrative time, because they are the ones who stand to benefit from the transaction, so they're not, these, these things aren't current, or aren't frequent, where you have a reserved property, but if one happens, you won't be covering your cost under the current policy.
Councillor Wilbur?
As I say, Jim just alluded to where my thought process was, is that this is in regards to land that we are selling. So, we've got the example of Grandview School, so really, those costs of advertising and the administration fees should be borne by the person developing the property that's getting it from us. So, I think different from what Mr. Litstone was saying.
Fair point. Councillor Rogers?
Well, we got the same thing downtown, the burned-out buildings that are downtown as well.
So, I don't, I don't know, yeah, and I don't know what that cost is, but I mean, I guess the benefit is, and of course, down the Leon staff again, but the benefit would be what are the, what does it need to be for us to cover our costs? Because advertising has gone up, I mean, it's reality, right?
So, can we ask it, so as a motion, then we ask administration to bring that back to us so we can put a relevant policy in place reflecting today's world and costs?
So, move?
What are really costs?
Good. Councillor Parslow, move. Second to councillor Rogers? Speak to it councillor Rogers?
Do we want to also look at the interest rates? Should we make amendment to look at the interest rates, or, sorry, the percentage on commission? 10% up to 10,000, and 7% commission up to 100,000. I just sold a bunch of property and I paid 2%. So, I don't know if that's, if that's, if this, if the percentages on commission, are they reflective from today's? Or I know that years ago it used to be that high?
And I think that's part of, to me, the whole policy that you want our review of, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Sorry?
I think it was the same. I'll help you with that.
So, am I, am I hearing that you reaffirmed the policy, but you've directed a further report that might require you to amend the policy?
Yeah. We want, yeah, we want to have that.
We want to know what the front should be.
Well, you are up, but without a report, or not?
No.
No, we want a report to know what it should be.
In case it doesn't actually cost double, in case it only is 500 bucks.
So, no decision on this policy till you get the report, that's it.
Did we confuse you enough there, Jim?
Sorry, Jim.
We'll get the, we'll get the motion to you.
Special occasions permit policy. Councillor Jevkoff?
I move that we repeal the policy.
Thank you, seconded? Councillor Parslow? Discussion?
Why?
Councillor Jevkoff?
The process now for getting a special occasion permit doesn't involve anybody here anymore, it's on the computer strictly, and there's no requirement for RCMP approval or anything.
Unless, of course, it's our property.
Our property.
It's gonna, when the person going online identifies the property as being owned by the city of Dawson Creek, then the computer's gonna send us a notice asking what our opinion of that is, and then council's gonna have to make a decision about that anyway.
So, is that like beer gardens at the fall fair?
For instance.
Old timers at the ring.
Ring, yeah.
We would, they would still have to approve all of that, because it's your land.
They have it right here anyways.
Yeah.
Is that like wine at the art gallery?
Yep.
Because right now there's a box, do you own this property? If you check that off, who does, or no, who does, and whoever the owner is has to, has to provide approval.
Just have to enter the right name in there.
So, the, the need for a policy doesn't exist because it comes. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. I've got six more that I want to add.
You're on the home stretch.
Councillor Schuman?
Nine, expenses, reimbursements of, I would make the motion, motion
Motion.
That we, what's the word?
Confirm.
Confirm.
Reaffirm.
Reaffirm. Okay, my brain is like fried, you guys.
Thank you, second?
Reaffirm this policy.
Seconded councillor McFadden, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Oh, sorry, councillor Jevkoff?
Well, I've got some comments here, because I wanted to change the wording, the word from option to responsibility. And just reading through Jim's comments. So, this to me is not an issue where staff is going through and doing a forensic audit of expenses. This to me is putting the responsibility on councillors to be honest about it. So, you know, if you're, if you're provided a meal, then you don't claim for that. Isn't that what, isn't that simple?
Acceptance.
Sorry? Just, you got a quick, so I'm gonna ask through to Jim?
So, to begin with, 4A applies to staff as well. We have a flat per diem, and we went to the flat per diem to avoid this requirement for receipting and the administrative process around verifying receipts. And so, if we go away from the flat rate to something else, doesn't matter what else it is, then we bring back in the requirement to show our auditors that we have enacted the policy, that we do look at all of the conferences to see what meals were provided and go to the person who's gone to that conference, staff or council, and ask them if they attended the breakfast, and if they did, where's my check for 250 or 1480 or whatever it is? The whole reason we're going to the per diem was to get away from that kind of thing. Councillor Jevkoff is raising basically the same point that councillor Parslow did when this was reviewed at the beginning of the last term. And you, you talked around it, and what you decided was, count on, exactly as councillor Jevkoff is saying, count on the good graces of councillors and put this in about them having the option to do it, but don't establish any verification. Don't make it mandatory, which would require verification, leave it optional. So, if you do the reverse, well, we'll get into the checking game.
Councillor Jevkoff?
So, it would fit right in with our code of conduct, like we've approved the code of conduct today. All of us approved, I think I voted for it.
Yeah. It was a while ago.
I was gonna say, you guys approved it. But it would fit right in with that, I mean, it's just, you know, applying the code of conduct requirements, and so changing the word from option to responsibility is pretty straightforward.
Councillor Wilbur?
I was gonna say, though, that in the discussions before, too, around the per diem, it wasn't just around meals, it was around anyone that maybe had daycare costs while they were in town, or taxis, or...
Missing work.
Missing work, I mean, so it doesn't just cover meals, it covers
Your time.
The things that you're paying for while you're there. I mean, there's a whole gamut, and I just remember having that conversation before when it was brought up last time.
And the per diem is meant to cover that, eh? But if you've got a, if you've got supper there, the 40 dollars, that's all bonus, you're double-dipping if you're...
Yeah, if you, I guess, I...
If you want to pay that back, you absolutely can. If you want to pay that back, you absolutely can. If you want to put that forty dollars towards your babysitter instead, then you can.
And there's certainly an argument to be made that your new code of conduct would require, uh, you, uh, if you wish to be compliant with both policies at once, which is, of course, desired, that you would return, um, the amount that that meal, uh, represented. Um, so, but the effect of changing it from, uh, uh, an option that you ought to do, uh, and the consequence of you not doing it is the code of conduct, which is one of your other counselors rats you out to council, and pretty soon, there's a motion to censure. Um, that's one process. The other process is, if you change it to make it mandatory, that you must, then I'm required, uh, Shelley is required to meet our fiduciary duties and get a clean audit report, we're required to set up a process that checks. That's the facts of it. We're, we'll have to look at your receipts, we'll have to look at the conference brochure, we'll have to go and inquire. Um, so firstly, that puts us in a bad spot. Uh, but secondly, you won't save any money. Like, my time and Shelley's time's pretty highly compensated.
Counselor Wilbur?
I just wanted to, like, for example, um, just attending NCLGA, there was, most of the meals I couldn't eat because of my dietary needs. And even though we had filled out that information, there wasn't meals that were provided for people that had dietary needs, and there was other people from other communities, the same thing happened. So we had to go buy meals.
So then it doesn't apply?
I'm just saying, though, those, that's why the flat rate, right? You have this, and you have to cover whatever your expenses may be out of that.
Things just like living out a law.
Counselor Parslow?
I'm all for the flat perdiem. Um, it saves a lot of staff time, and it's, uh, it covers, uh, you know, there's a lot of other things that, expenses associated with conferences are. The other thing is that, uh, ultimately, you know, there's so many dynamic things that happen, that ultimately, the, uh, you have to make a decision. And you have to make a decision based upon integrity. And that's, that's basically a self-discipline thing. And it, otherwise, you're gonna get into a very complicated system. And, uh, we all ultimately have to live with ourselves. And, uh, I'm comfortable with the status quo.
The perdiem, uh, aspect for me, um, honestly, traveled for 12 years, so whatever, whatever system you have in place, whether it's receipts and this, or perdiem, it always, always seems to cost you a lot more money, travel, and, and doing things than it does. And the perdiem, um, my understanding of it having, uh, the last year is exactly that, that there's so many other components for counselors and staff when they're traveling. Um, and then the time that goes into receipts and pain, so the perdiem is a way to manage that. But it's a, it's a tough one, and it gets into exactly that, the integrity and your own self, um, values in terms of saying, I just want to be making sure I'm fairly compensated for the time, and the expenses that I incurred when I go on the road. And that's how I kind of look at it from a personal perspective. And I, I don't, shouldn't cost me money, but I don't want to make money either. I just want to get fairly treated. But then having some consistency in that. I've, having lived through both of those things, and at the end of the month, I always end up with a thousand bucks extra on my credit card. Couldn't figure out where the hell that happened. So it's a tough, it's a tough game. Um, so, yeah, I certainly appreciate it. It's tough, yeah. Further discussion?
What's the motion?
Motion is that we reaffirm the current policy.
I thought we had an amendment.
Nope.
So I'll, I'll make the amendment, uh, do go through the process that we, uh, change the word from option to responsibility.
Thank you. Seconded?
Isn't that gold only against my motion?
So we have a, we have a secondary? Or, so we have a, an amendment? Seconder? For a second time, do I have a secondary for the amendment? At a third time, do I have a secondary for the amendment? Thank you. Are you ready to, uh, questions on the motion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, thank you, you guys. That was a, uh, a good bit of work to get through this afternoon on our policy, and certainly, uh, I think valued, uh, discussion and interaction and, uh, what it should be. Any further, uh, items? Motion to adjourn, Counselor, oh, McFadden, you want to have a?
Uh, we get all through with this now, policy stuff?
No.
September, Counselor.
We're done in September.
We'll be done in three years.
When do we get into services policy?
September.
We still got a little bit to go, yeah.
We're gonna decide.
You ready for, motion to adjourn, please? Wilbur, Schuman, all in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your, uh...